Welcome to the June 16 meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Strayman.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Quintero.
Here. The flag salute tonight will be led by Councilmember Weaver and the invocation by the Reverend Father Barret Burezian from the Western Diocese.
Join with me in our flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invitation.
Oh Lord, God Almighty, guide, we pray thee, all those to whom thou hast committed the government of this city, and grant to them at this time special gifts of wisdom and understanding of counsel and strength, that upholding what is right and following what is true. They may obey thy holy will and fulfill thy divine purpose through our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Mr. Kusakian, may we have your report?
Agenda for the June 16, 2009, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was postponed on Thursday, June 11, 2009, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
What's next?
At 3:00 is presentation and appointments, and 3:00 is agenda preview for the meeting of June 23, 2009.
Mr. McFaul.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Next week, based on the study session this morning, we have scheduled another special meeting, budget study session for next Tuesday. That would start at 9:30 in the morning. We would move then to the redevelopment agency at 2:30. We have three public hearings, or we have three items, two of them public hearings, the first being a report regarding the proposed site ordinance for the Vaughn store located at 311 Los Feliz Road. The second is a public hearing regarding a proposed sign ordinance for Panera Bread located at 300 North Brand Boulevard. And then lastly, we'll have a report from the Director of Development Services, and I imagine the Finance Director might participate in that, which is for the proposed 2009-2010 Glendale Redevelopment Agency budget. We then will start a series of joint meetings. First one will be a joint meeting between the Glendale City Council and the Redevelopment Agency, where the Director of Development Services will provide a report regarding the master plan for the east side of Brand Boulevard, including design for the pedestrian biseo at 218 South Brand and the alley between Brand Boulevard and Louise Street. We will then have a joint meeting of the Glendale City Council, the Glendale Redevelopment Agency, and the Housing Authority. This will start with what's commonly referred to as the TEPRA hearing. This is a Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act hearing for the California statewide Community Development Authority issuance of $85 million in taxes and senior living revenue bonds in support of various facilities owned and operated by the Southern California Presbyterian Homes. Then the Director of Finance will be conducting a report on the 2009-2010 Housing Authority budget. We then move to a joint meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Financing Authority, where the Director of Administrative Services will present a report on Amendment Number One to the Standby Purchase Agreement relating to the City of Glendale and the Glendale Financing Authority Variable Rate Demand Certificates of Participation, this being for the 2000 Police Building Project, and approving various legal documents. That evening at 6 o'clock, we'll have the normal Glendale City Council meeting, and there are a few items on that agenda. The first...
Normal, as opposed to...
As opposed to a special meeting.
The abnormal ones that we've been having.
As opposed to a special meeting. Let me clarify that, yes. The regularly scheduled meeting, where we do have a number of action items. The first, Director of Administrative Services, regarding the annual water and power transfer. Next, the adoption of the city's 2009-10 budget. Next would be the Director of Administrative Services with a report regarding the presentation discussion of the proposed landscape maintenance district to North San Fernando Corridor. And then the update on North Glendale Community Plan presented by the Director of Planning. Lastly, there will be a hearing by the General Manager of Glendale Water and Power on the mandatory water conservation ordinance. That would finally be it for next Tuesday.
Thank you, Mr. McFaul. What's next?
3B is proclamation designating June 14 through 20, 2009, as Flag Week. And I believe there's some people coming up, including Vito Caneli, distinguished person who's received the distinguished honor from the Italian consulate recently. I believe he's a Knight of Italy.
That's right. And a Knight of Montrose.
That's right, a Knight of the Realm.
But the proclamation reads, "For as Flag Week, June 14 through 20, 2009, was established by an act of Congress in 1966, has a 21-day period during which our flag should be especially honored and displayed. By our flag's display, we reaffirm our allegiance to the principles for which it stands and honor those men and women who have served under it, protecting our nation from those who have attempted to destroy our freedom. The flag continues to stand as a symbol of hope and opportunity to those of foreign birth who have become citizens of our country. Therefore, I, Frank Quintero, Mayor of the City of Glendale, proclaim the week of June 14 through the 20th as Flag Week, and urge all residents to honor America by displaying our flag during this time." Thank you.
Vito, and by the way, I'm not just, for the record, I'm not just being informal with Mr. Canela. We've known each other since, yes, since I was very, very small. And Vito, it gives me great joy to present this proclamation to you on behalf of the mayor with regard to and in commemoration of National Flag Week. Please say a few things, and then I have something to say related to your hard work to bring about National Flag Week.
Thank you very much for this proclamation. I'd like to thank the City Council member for that. If you don't mind, I'd like to say a few words how the whole thing started, actually. The Congress of the United States, by joint resolution in June 9, 1966, approved HJ Resolution 763, proclaiming the week, a week of June 14, or as a National Flag Week. And in the same resolution, requested that the President is to issue every year a proclamation and also to call upon the citizens of the United States to display the flag during that week, something that we don't see. They signed the proclamation on all the President very quietly, privately, so it's, you know, what they say on the resolution. The original Flag Week is very special to me, because I am one of the few people alive that was involved originally with Bill Bailey of Montrose, like Christina Canara Rotary Club, Dan Carpenter, if you remember, he was the editor of the news ledger, the Ledger newspaper, and Congressman H. Allen Smith on a successful accomplishment of Flag Week. Those are the people that we started the whole thing. Every year since 1967, I have sent a letter to each of the President, and sometimes the White House sending a copy of the proclamation to me, but no publicity is given. This causes me anger and shame, because after 43 years of the original proclamation, the majority of the people whom I spoke know here in Glendale, because in Glendale we do that every year, they remain ignorant above Flag Week. It was my hope that this year President Obama would give some publicity to Flag Week. And maybe in the near future, we will include in a national calendar this event as a reminder to everybody to display the flag that week. In closing, I'd like to remind everyone in our community to put the flag out that week, regardless of what's going to be done nationwide, and help it to demonstrate that they are still enough good Americans and that patriotism is alive in our community. Thank you very much. Incidentally, Obama, President Obama, signed that legislation June 11. It's on the White House website. I picked it up from there, but no publicity is given. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, you may remember that a few years ago, you and Councilmember Najarian, Councilmember Weaver, and then Mayor Eusefian attended an event in Montrose. It was a dedication, a plaque, a bronze plaque in honor of National Flag Week. And that plaque tells a little bit about the story of how National Flag Week came about, but I just want to read the words that are on that plaque up there, because it relates to Mr. Canela and Mr. Bailey. More than what National Flag Week means in terms of the law, what it means to the people in the community where National Flag Week was born, namely Montrose, which is a part of the city of Glendale, because it speaks to American spirit. And it says, "Montrose, California, National Flag Week, it all started in Montrose. Montrose merchants Bill Bailey and Vito Canela dreamed of establishing a week of recognition to honor the American flag. Supported by the Rotary Club, a movement gained national appeal in 1966, after a joint vote by the United States Senate and House of Representatives, Lyndon Johnson declared the week in which Flag Day falls to be the annual observance of respect for our national symbol and signed National Flag Week into law. In honor of this occasion, the Montrose community hereby commends Mr. Bailey and Mr. Canela for their vision. In doing so, we pay tribute to the enterprising nature of the individual citizen, whose aspirations so profoundly contribute to the fabric of the American spirit. We invite all Americans to display the flag, the flag of our nation, and to remember that the dream of National Flag Week was born in Montrose, California, and it was dedicated on the 14th day of June, 2004. We are very proud of Mr. Canela. He's a local gem, and I guess one of the gems in the crown here, the jewel city. So, Mr. Canela, thank you very much for the work you have done and the work you continue to do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I agree. Next, please.
At 3C is reappointment of Ms. Grace Walker to the Commission on the Status of Women. This was a nomination by Councilmember Weaver.
Mr. Mayor, I won't go through everything that Grace Walker's done in her years. I've known her for many years, three pages of her success. All I do is mention her education, where she's a doctoral student at Pepperdine University, attended Cal State University, a Master's in Education Administration, Cal State University Los Angeles Secondary Teaching Credential in History, Loyola Marymount University, Master's in Education, LMU Pupil Personnel Services Credential, and other schools in psychology, Bachelor of Arts in the Philippines. That's just her education, not considering her community activities and what she has done. So, as far as I'm concerned, she's done a great job. She's a real go-getter, and I'd like to nominate her for a reappointment.
Need a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Strayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. And Councilwoman Friedman has...
I have two nominations for Design Review Board Two, April Sakai, and for Design Review Board One, Judy Palmer.
Thank you very much. Next.
Next is City Council and staff comments.
Comment?
Well, just a general comment. Public alert, I heard on TV before coming in here. As we all know, the Lakers won in a very exciting tournament, very exciting this year compared to some. The ratings were among the highest ever for an NBA playoff. Tomorrow, they're having their parade, and if anybody out there is planning to attend the ceremony today, they expect 95,000 people in the Coliseum tomorrow. They've taken the floor of the Staples Center, the basketball court, and they put it down on the turf at the Coliseum. So, get there early for planning, because they're going to close a lot of streets down for that. It's all just a public safety alert.
Ms. Friedman.
On Saturday, it was my pleasure to attend the annual picnic of the Royal Canyon Homeowners Association, and I wanted to just say that it was very well attended, and it was attended, and it was very nice to see all of the neighbors come out, and there were new neighbors who had never met the other people in the area who had a chance to do that. And it was a very nice mixer, and despite being overcast, it was a real success. I wanted to thank them for including me in their picnic.
Thank you. Mr. Najarian.
Just a follow-up for Mr. Zern, I think. The Safe Streets Plan and the feedback from the seminar that we had with our experts, is it coming up soon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Najarian, we're expecting it to be the first or second meeting of July.
And will that be coming as recommendations for any changes that the council will be deciding on, or is this just a status update?
Mr. Najarian, in this case, it was as Mr. Mitchell from my Traffic and Transportation Operations spearheaded was going to come and give an overview of the technical training and then tie all of the different aspects together and kind of give an overview in a briefing. We're hoping to tie that in at the same time with an item that Mr. Strayman asked us to come back with, which was an update on our overall traffic, safety, and enforcement program. We gave that update to council about 18 months ago, and we're coming back with that, Police Department combined with the traffic folks, to give that. I think then, at that point, we weren't making any recommendations, but I think at that point, it would facilitate discussion on where we might want to go with some of those ideas.
Right. Leave us some room for some direction in the noticed items, so...
We will do that.
If we come up with ideas or urge you to adopt certain implementations, we can do that as well.
We will do that.
Thank you. Mr. Strayman.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to announce that we had a winner in last week's Glendale History Challenge. If we have the photograph from last week, if we can bring that up. Gil's Market, Gil's Community Market, which became the site of, at one time, Mrs. Gooch's and Whole Foods, and is now, what are they calling it now? It's...
The Zone.
The Zone.
Wow, that's...
That's right. And so our winner was Mike Lowry, who won a $25 gift certificate to Jack's Bar and Grill. And for those of you who don't know what we're talking about, each week we show a photo from the history of Glendale somewhere in our city, and we ask viewers to either call in or email in at the end of the council meeting and leave their guess as to what the site is and when the photograph was taken. And tonight's image is, bring that up, this building. And let's take a good look at it. I will tell you, the building no longer exists. What a shame, huh? Beautiful piece of architecture. If you know what this building was and approximately when the photo was taken, then you want to contact Chuck Wyke at the Glendale Library, and there's the information on the screen. Chuck Wyke at 818-548-2042, or you can email him at C.Wyke, W-I-K-E, at CI.Glendale.CA.us. Let's take one more look at the photograph. There it is. All right. If you make the correct guess, you'll win a $25 gift certificate to the Cheesecake Factory at the Americana at Brand. Okay, good luck. Thank you.
What year was the...
The market.
What year was the...
Oh, I'm sorry. That particular photograph was taken in 1962.
Yeah, 61-62.
Okay, thank you. What's next?
Next is items. The following are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request before the motion is proposed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull 5C. Charlie?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the remainder of the consent calendar.
Second. For a second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Strayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Would you read 5C into the record?
5C is Director of Public Works regarding Ward of Contract for Transit Fleet Inspections. At C1 is motion authorizing C manager to execute an agreement with Transit Resource Center, a division of Ameritrans Service Corporation for Glendale Beeline and Glendale Dialer Ride Quarterly Transit Fleet Inspections and Pre-Delivery Inspections and Post-Delivery Compliance Audits of New Beeline Buses in an amount not to exceed $136,926 for a five-year period with two one-year extension options.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question for Mr. Zern is, why so long to get these buses? It's going to go in production in, well, in September, and then the next batch in 2012? I thought we were going to get them, we got the money like two years ago, didn't we?
Well, we, Mr....
Lged, two years.
Councilmember Najarian, the full funding was probably about a year, it's been. But the issue is, there are very few bus manufacturers in the United States that make these types of buses, and their backlogs are just that. The bus actually takes probably three months to build, and so the rest of the time, we're just simply waiting our turn in the queue to get, and I'll tell you another thing, Mr. Najarian, I actually put in a letter holding our place several months ago, just to make sure that we had that place. Otherwise, they told us, if you can't get any kind of a letter to us or any kind of commitment, we'll just put you to the back of the line.
Of the bus.
The back of the bus. And, you know, we do a lot of piggybacking, is what we call it, where we, other agencies who are also purchasing like-type vehicles, we'll get together with them and see if we can, and help streamline the process. But this is really, it is amazing how long it actually takes, but it is more the backlog of orders ahead of us than anything else.
Have we submitted, and this came from the MTA call for projects?
Part of it, yes.
Are we submitting an additional request for buses this round, this month?
Rest assured, Mr. Najarian, anytime there's a pot of money or bus, request for buses is an eligible project. We're asking for it, federal, state, local, we will definitely...
So, we should have, for the people out there, we should have an entirely new fleet inspected and approved and accepted.
Substantial.
Over the course of a couple of years, we'll have a complete...
If all goes well, we hope to achieve that, yes.
That's all I had, Mr. Mayor. I'll move the item.
Second. And I'm just happy to hear that we're manufacturing buses in the United States, no matter how long it takes.
And there's a backlog.
And there's a backlog, that's right. CNG, clean natural gas. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Strayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next, please.
Next would be oral communication.
Okay, we're going to break oral communications up. We'll have presentations, and then oral communications will follow towards the end of the meeting. If you have any, if you want to speak on any of the hearings or the agenda items, please fill out a card and submit it. We'll start with National Night Out. Erica Suzuki, Ron Scott, and Sergeant Major Gilkerson.
Oh, double duty. Say Sergeant Major.
Rank is that? Oh, my God. I knew all the ranks.
Top enlisted Marine Corps.
Mayor Quintero, City Council, City Staff. I'm Officer Zakarian. I'd like to present our National Night Out team. This is only a few of them. We had been putting this together for months, trying to get a team together to create National Night Out in several locations. We're going to have one of our leading persons that me and Ron Scott had come up with, that's a high school student. Her name is Erica Suzuki, and she'll give a little spiel on National Night Out. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, City Council, and staff. My name is Erica Suzuki, and I'm a student at Glendale High School and one of the event organizers. This year, National Night Out falls on Tuesday, August 4, and we're hoping that the City Council can switch their meeting night so that they will be able to attend some of the events. National Night Out is a community-driven event with the homeowners associations, community police officers, neighborhood watch groups, and other citizens of Glendale working together to fight crime and drugs. Some of our objectives are to heighten crime and drug awareness, to generate support for and increase participation in local anti-crime groups, to strengthen neighborhood spirit and community police partnerships, and to increase the number of neighborhood watch groups, to send a message to criminals that neighborhoods are organized and vigilant in fighting crime, drug, and gang-related issues in Glendale. This year, we will have six events occurring simultaneously across Glendale. They will be at Pellicone Park, Pacific Community Center, Adams Hill Mini Park, Glendale High School, Verdugo Hills Hospital, and Alex Theater. Therefore, we hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm sure, and my name is Margaret Hammond, and I'm part of the committee, and we're going to do the one at Pacific. We have a group that are particularly going to get together because there's no homeowners in that area, so we're going to try and get a group together and do it as a different, from a different angle. And of course, our young lady has done a marvelous job of what the mission statement is and what our objectives are and our goal. And of course, it's one night, one cause, one community. So, we're hoping that we'll get a lot of people that will be part of our goal in making it a citywide campaign from doing with the Police Department. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Strayman.
Mr. Mayor, Ms. Suzuki made reference to, and I would like to ask that we look at the possibility of switching that particular Tuesday and perhaps the next night, which is a Wednesday. Perhaps, as we've done in the past, schedule our Wednesday, our Tuesday, regular meeting of the City Council on Wednesday instead, or our day's business if possible, so that we, as elected officials, can fan out throughout the city and attend these events.
Mr., I won't mind a bit. I'll be in Hawaii.
I didn't catch, that's a good idea, Mr. Strayman, but what time does the National Night Out start? Did they say 8 o'clock?
It begins at 6.
Oh, 6. 6:00. 6:08.
So, shortening our agenda wouldn't serve, wouldn't meet the time, right? Okay.
But she started at 4.
And this is something a Brownock would allow, just to schedule meetings. If there's consensus to do that, we'll prepare the necessary paperwork and get that on.
Can they do it at 4?
I think it's a good idea.
Well, we can schedule a meeting for earlier in the day, or we can schedule a special meeting for Wednesday evening, which has generally been our practice.
We can work at keeping the agenda light, and you could do it, say, at a special meeting in the afternoon, stuff that had to be acted upon. It's up to you. Or we can do the whole meeting on Wednesday.
Whatever works. If we do it on the same day, maybe that'll be easier.
I like that idea, Mr. Mayor.
Some people might complain they missed the evening oral communications, but other than that, we can put the business either on the afternoon or at a special meeting in the evening.
We can give them time at the National Night Out to say whatever they have to say to the crowd. It'll be different.
Then if it's your direction and the council's consensus, we'll work at whatever business we need to bring that day, we'll try and do it at a special meeting in the afternoon on Tuesday.
Thank you. Thank you.
An absence will make their hearts grow fonder.
Absolutely, yes, yes. I'm sure, I'm sure.
Uh, the next, uh, presentation announcement is Arthur Mangasarian, followed by Karin Haratunian.
I didn't know all the meetings are actually Tuesday night. Mine is also. My name is Arthur Mangasarian. Good evening, Mayor Quintero and City Councils. Um, I'm actually here for promoting a soccer game, which, uh, the charity event's gonna happen on July 21st, which is Tuesday night at 8:00 PM in Rose Bowl. I have a thirty-second, uh, film, if I can possibly show it to you.
Sure.
LAFC proudly presents Tuesday, July 21st, at the Rose Bowl, Chelsea FC versus Inter Milan. The biggest international club match ever in the United States. Forty World Cup players, six international captains. Halftime performance by international sensation, Andy. All net profits benefit youth soccer. July 21st, Chelsea FC versus Inter Milan at the Rose Bowl.
I got involved only for one reason. It's a charity event, and, uh, the event is intended to help underprivileged kids who love to play soccer, gives them opportunity to be trained, to be trained and get off the streets. It's going to be start actually by twelve o'clock with all the festivities, and we have a six o'clock celebrity game, and, uh, eight o'clock our game starts. These two giants of the soccer is as big as the Lakers in Europe. And, uh, one of the LAFC, uh, members wrote a check to bring them in. And all the benefits goes to LAFC kids, who wants to be soccer, uh, play soccer. I invite everybody to come. It's going to be televised by, with, uh, actually in the, uh, sport channel, and also, all the tickets can be bought through me or just go Ticketmaster. Uh, it's about ninety-two thousand dollar ticket. They already sold about forty-two thousand. I hope I can see everybody who's interested in soccer. Thank you very much for your opportunity to talk.
Thank you.
My husband's probably already in line for tickets, after seeing that.
Karin Haratunian, followed by Jerry Cragnati.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, last week, I stood here only a few days away from, uh, our first, uh, professional boxing event in our city, and since I was promoting the event and was under extreme, uh, responsibilities and pressure, I forgot to thank some of the people and some of the, um, city departments involved. And, uh, not that we had, uh, the first event, a very successful event, and I was pleased to see some of you there. I wanted to make sure that I come back and thank, uh, once again, our mayor, our council members, uh, city attorney, city manager, and their staff, and of course, the Glendale Police, uh, who, all of us together worked, uh, very hard to make this event possible and to make it very successful. At this point, I would also like to offer to donate some of the, uh, boxing equipment that was used for the first time during that event. So they're basically, uh, only used once. I would like to donate some of that equipment to the Glendale's PAL Boxing Program, to help sustain the program and to help, uh, get some, some of the Glendale kids out of the street and to help them put on the right track for their life. So, at this point, I would, again, like to thank and, uh, just express my willingness and readiness to continue working with, uh, all of you and all the departments of, uh, our city and to contribute, uh, to our city's well-being. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can we get a report? Uh, there were a lot of concerns from the community about, um, how it was gonna be managed. At some point, uh, just, just a debriefing as to how it went.
Right. Well, some of us did attend, and, uh, what do you call it? Uh, it was an excellent event. There was absolutely no issues of any sort. Uh, there were a lot of bothers, I guess, and brothers perhaps, with fathers there with their, uh, kids, and it was a very, uh, well-attended event. There was absolutely no issues with the police. As I left that night, I actually paused on one of the side streets just to see where the, um, where the traffic was going. It all headed south on, uh, Canyatta Boulevard, and so I think the first event was an unqualified, uh, success. I, uh, pounded one of Mr. Najarian's kids to get him, to get him a little bit into boxing. He seemed to be having a good time. He brought his, uh, friend, and...
He needs no encouragement to fight, Frank, let me tell you that.
That's right.
My two sons go at it without any encouragement.
In training. He reacted, uh, real well to, uh, to the roughhousing. And, uh, anyway, it was just a great event. And I, I really, not only did I enjoy it, but it was very well-organized. The Parks and Rec staff did a very good job, and obviously, Mr. Haratunian, uh, and what was so interesting was there, there was strictly a Glendale crowd. I mean, a lot of the boxers were from Glendale, and, uh, just a great event. So, yeah, it's a good idea to get a report from Parks and Rec and Police. Mr. Starmer.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, given the nature of the event and, and, uh, you're allowing, uh, this one with subsequent ones requiring an evaluation by the City Manager, we would, in the normal course of things, bring you back an evaluation. But confirming what you said, all the initial reports back from the Police Department, Fire Department, and Parks and Recreation is that it went, uh, very, very smoothly. Went very well.
And I don't wanna leave, leave Ms. Friedman out. She was pretty aggressive herself as she...
Her complaint was she couldn't get close enough.
I will say that, um, I attended it. I've never been to a boxing match before, never watched boxing, and it was, um, it was an interesting experience. I, I don't see myself becoming a huge boxing fan, but I was glad to see that the crowd was subdued. They were excited, but, you know, nobody, they had tied the chairs together to make sure that no one would throw them, but I didn't see anybody having any interest in throwing anything. Uh, it was also surprising to see that there was, I, I didn't see anybody drinking, even though they were selling beer. So, um, they had a two-beer limit, but I didn't see people even having one beer. Um, it was, people were very, watching it very much like any other sporting event. It looked like a lot of people in the crowd were athletes of one sort or another. Um, the other thing that was interesting was that these guys showed so much aggression when they're boxing, and as soon as that bell goes off, they kinda tap gloves, and sometimes they hug each other, pat each other on the back, and I thought that was, sort of, shows you that it was not an emotional thing. It was very much a sporting event, and, um, if children were there and were take, to take one lesson away, it was that, that there's a difference between sort of the sport of boxing and any actual aggression. Uh, none of the boxers showed any aggression at all to each other between the rounds, and it was very friendly and, and very professional. And there were also several Olympic athletes there, and they introduced them, about seven or eight, um, Olympiad athletes. Uh, so, you know, it was a, it was a pretty impressive event, and, uh, I, I look forward to seeing that report, but I didn't see any signs of trouble, so I was glad for that.
All right, I agree. Thank you. Jerry Cragnati, followed by Leon Mayer.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council and Staff. My name is Jerry Cragnati. Recently, I have been invited to become a part of a group focused on bringing the Glendale Symphony back to life in our community. It was only a few years back that the Glendale Symphony identified Glendale, and Glendale was the Glendale Symphony. The Glendale Symphony was nationally renowned and regionally patronized by a large audience. There have been many changes in Glendale over the past few years, and one change that our community deserves is an exciting, vibrant, and successful symphony. To that end, every journey begins one step at a time. We invite you to join us for an evening with NBC personality Fritz Coleman and the folks at Forest Lawn, who have graciously provided a really stunning venue. Fritz has been generous, and he has donated his time and his talent to support our symphony as we begin to craft the future of our new Glendale Symphony. And also, there will be music by select members of the orchestra. So what is it? It's a summer evening under the stars, featuring food and hors d'oeuvres by Chin Chin Beverly Hills, Phoenicia Restaurant, as well as an open bar of wine and soft drinks. When is it? It's Thursday, June 25th, from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM. That's nine days from now, so you still have plenty of time to get your call in here, which is coming next. First of all, it's at the Museum Plaza Courtyard, overlooking the city lights at Forest Lawn, Glendale. It's really a spectacular venue, an outdoor venue. The cost is seventy-five dollars a person, and how do you figure it out how to get there? Well, you go to glandalsymphony.org, click on Fritz Coleman Event, and there will be a number for you to call to reserve your seats, and you can pay at the door. So there's also a phone number if you want to call it right, not right now, but I'll give it to you right now, at 818-587-20. Please take the time to join us for food, fun, and comedy. This event will be an opportunity to announce some very exciting changes and updates. These will make the new Glendale Symphony available to many more people in our community, and again, we will be having a very highly-regarded music experience in our city. Again, the number is 818-858720, or glandalsymphony.org. Thank you very much. I hope to see you next Thursday.
Thank you. Leon Mayer.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, members of the Council and staff. My name is Leon Mayer. I'm here on behalf of the Glendale Library and the Friends of Glendale Library. And the Readers Program that I talked about a few times over the last two weeks is under full steam. Anybody, whether or not you're in a public school or private school or no school, you're invited to sign up at one of our branch libraries or the central libraries for our summer reading program. It's, uh, primarily for eighth grade and under, but we're also having an adult reading program going on at the same time. So that's something everybody should, uh, consider getting involved with. Now, in conjunction with that, uh, program, the Friends at the Library have their annual book sale at the dock in back of the library. Uh, for members of the, uh, Friends at the Library, you can come there on Friday, um, the June 26th, between 3:30 and 5:30. You get, uh, great books at, uh, fantastic prices. People in the community have been very generation, generous in donating books, and then if you're not a member, you come the next day between, uh, 10:00 and 3:00, and maybe we can talk you into becoming a member, but you'll still be able to buy a good book there. Now, our next program is Thursday, this Thursday, 7:00 Central Library. Parking is verified, validated through the, uh, Maryland, uh, parking structure, three hours, and we're having Barbara Eisenberg to talk about Frank Gehry. Her book is Conversations with Frank Gehry. He's still alive. He graduated from USC in '64. He's a fantastic, world-renowned architect. Barbara Eisenberg, in her own light, is a known journalist. She's, uh, written for Time, for the LA Times, and she also is Associate Director of the LA Hum- Humanity Society, which is, uh, founded, not founded, but housed at LA, at USC. So, for USC graduates who can make it and don't make it, shame on you. Uh, but this is open for the public, anybody, but particularly for people who have an interest in architecture and loyalty to USC. And, uh, no charge, and we'll see you at 7:00 this Thursday. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Hold on. Okay, that concludes, um, first part of oral communications. What's next, please?
Party's gonna read a lot.
Under adoption of ordinances, that's seven on the agenda. Seven A is an urgency ordinance providing for supplementary benefits and compensation of certain officers, employees of the City of Glendale to supplement salary ordinance of said city and amending the, and amending the Glendale Municipal Code relating to compensation and fringe benefits under certain memorandum of understanding. This is for the Glendale Police Officers Association and was offered on June 9th, 2009 by Councilmember Weaver.
Mr. Mayor, move seven B.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Here's, uh, cards submitted for seven B.
Well, they needed to get in at the beginning of the items. Go ahead.
It just arrived.
All right, I have a speaker, Mike Moehl.
But I'm late. Try to get here as soon as possible. Uh, you know, when there's a crisis in the country or the city, it's nice to see which people step forward and make major decisions. Today at the budget session, I was very impressed with the questions that were being asked by the councilman to the city manager and the police, uh, captain. I was disturbed when I heard Mr. Weaver say that I didn't say I would be willing to cut the salary of middle or upper-middle management. Boy, that means that all the cuts will be at the bottom of the totem pole. Is that fair, Mr. Weaver? Now, as far as the supplemental benefits are concerned with the medical, why is it, I'm told, that some departments, some managers, don't have to pay a co-pay and some do? What is, why isn't there not a uniform pay and a co-pay for everybody within the city? You pick and choose who your favorite employees will be? Probably at the upper-management level, 'cause they're probably the ones that don't have to pay a co-pay, but the people at the bottom of the totem pole, they're the ones who get to pay the co-pay. Why? Another question is, how many people do you think in this country, it's in the millions, do not have medical insurance from their employer? But we do at the City of Glendale. And you don't think it's fair to ask them to pick up this additional co-pay money? People are being laid off. People would love to have these jobs that other people wouldn't take. We have 10% unemployment in this city. I don't have to remind you, the average income in this city is forty-five thousand dollars. Not a hundred thousand, like we pay a lot of our city employees, or two hundred thousand dollars. The question is, why do we have to have the city employees? Why can't we have them pick up their own medical? At least they have a medical program. A lot of, a lot of, a lot of citizens here do not. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
And thank you for letting me speak, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Miss Moehl.
Where were we? I thought it...
There was a motion and a second.
It is interesting to know, Mr. Mayor, that we all received an email from Herb Milano late this afternoon on exactly the same subject matter, so I guess Mr. Moehl and Mr. Milano got together and decided who would speak on this tonight.
Did you read yours?
Yeah, I read it. I haven't given my copy to staff yet.
Okay, um, roll call, please.
Councilmembers Raymond.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes.
Next. That's C is another urgency ordinance providing for supplementary benefits and compensation of certain officers and employees of the City of Glendale to supplement salary ordinance of said city and amending Glendale Municipal Code relating to compensation and fringe benefits under certain memorandum of understanding for Glendale Management Association, offered again on June 9th, 2009 by Councilmember Weaver.
Motion first heard.
Uh, let's hear from the public first. Mr. Moehl.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to address Mr. Weaver's comment. Offhand, it's sly remark. Mr. Weaver, I speak...
I haven't given my copy to staff yet.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Raymond.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next.
At C is another urgency ordinance providing for supplementary benefits and compensation of certain officers and employees of the City of Glendale, supplement salary ordinance of said city and amending the Glendale Municipal Code relating to compensation and fringe benefits under certain memorandum of understanding for the Glendale Firefighters Association, also offered on June 9, 2009 by Council Member Weaver.
Mayor moves 7C.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers, Raymond.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Quintero. Item 7D is an urgency ordinance providing for supplementary benefits and compensation of certain officers and employees of the City of Glendale to supplement salary ordinance of said city and amending Glendale Municipal Code relating to compensation and fringe benefits under certain memorandum of understanding for Glendale Management Association, offered again on June 9, 2009 by Council Member Weaver.
Motion first heard.
Let's hear from the public first. Mr. Mo Hill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to address Mr. Weaver's comment, oft-handed sly remark. Mr. Weaver, I speak with a lot of people in this city besides your, Mr. Raymond, or Quintero, Friedman, or Najarian. I speak with Mr. Mo, in past, I've spoken with Mr. Barry Allen, I've spoken with Mr. Herb Milano, and others. I've spoken with Mr. Bruce Philpott. Okay? So does that mean I shouldn't speak with anybody?
Mr. Mo Hill.
The question is about this supplemental medical, to stay on target. Again, why do we need, we have millions of people unemployed today, we have millions of people who don't have a medical program at all, and yet, we're gonna, oh, and excuse me, and you just asked the police department to find money out of their budget this afternoon. You didn't want them to remove the, what do you call that department, the vice squad, or three employees? You know, if we didn't pay the medical for these employees, we could hire more city employees. It's the benefit package is what's killing this city. I think if we had less benefits, we'd have more money to pay people. And let me tell you, people wouldn't ask for the benefits, because you know why? They would be glad to get $25 an hour or $50 an hour without the medical, because at 50 and 75, $100 an hour, heck, I can afford my own medical program. Again, the people at the bottom of the totem pole are the ones who are hurting most in this city, and yet you won't cut the salary at the top, because that's where the money is. It's part of the budget, and the medical program that we have in this city is a significant portion of the budget, that we're in a crisis today. I'd like to thank the city manager for, again, bringing up that the picture of economic growth is very dim for the state of California. Thank you.
Mr. Mo Hill, I have a question. You have an LA Fire Department t-shirt on.
Yes. I'm proud. I have friends, I have a friend who lives, works in the LA Police Department. I knew him before.
Have you ever asked him about his medical benefits?
Uh, yep. You know, he'd tell me, I deserve every penny. And you know what? I'm not surprised. I've discussed all the issue we have up here. I've talked to him about it, and he says, you know, but you know what he did tell me? I wish I worked for the City of Glendale, because they pay better than the City of Los Angeles.
All right, all right, good. Probably just a better department.
I know.
The profession is saying they don't. He's just, LA receives more. Okay, that's enough.
Okay.
We're done, thank you.
Mayor moves 7D.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Raymond.
Yes.
Friedman.
Can I say something before I vote?
Sure.
Just briefly. Because people in the private sector are losing their health insurance, doesn't mean that we should take away health insurance from the city's employees, from the people's employees. I happen to believe that everybody should have health insurance. People who are employed, people who are unemployed, it's a real crisis, and anybody who's been sick or had a catastrophic illness would know how important it is to have health insurance. So, while we look for savings, I don't think that this is the humane place to be cutting. So, I'll vote yes.
Okay.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next, please.
At E is an urgency ordinance providing for supplementary benefits and compensation of certain officers and employees of the City of Glendale to supplement salary ordinance of said city and amending Glendale Municipal Code relating to compensation and fringe benefits under certain memorandum of understanding for executives, offered on June 9, 2009 by Council Member Weaver.
Mr. Mayor moves 7E.
Mr., I need a second. Mr. Howard, is it within the?
Well, you know, Mr. Mayor, this is becoming a little bit over the top. You let him speak because he was late getting here. He's here now, he could be filling out these cards. I think he's just trying to pick them off one at a time. Certainly, and again, you want to probably err on the side of allowing someone to speak, but you can certainly limit the time to one and a half or two minutes if you'd like.
Well, let's creep it to, let's keep it to one minute. Mr. Mo Hill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Howard. The executives make the most amount of money in the city. Why can't they pick up their own medical? Councilman Freeman. The people at the bottom end, they struggle. At the top end, they're making over $100,000, $200,000. Why not have everybody either pay the same? Okay? Everybody gets the same equal, you know? Let's call it socialism. But the executives make so much money, I can't see why they can't pick up their own co-pay. Thank you, for letting me speak.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Raymond.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next, please.
At 7F is an urgency ordinance providing for supplementary benefits and compensation of certain officers and employees of the City of Glendale, supplement the salary ordinance of said city and amending the Glendale Municipal Code relating to compensation and fringe benefits under certain memorandum of understanding for council. This was offered on June 9, 2009 by Council Member Weaver as well.
Mayor moves 7F.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers, Raymond.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next.
At 7G is an urgency ordinance extending an interim moratorium ordinance on the installation of certain commercial wireless facilities with the City of Glendale and declaring the urgency thereof. This was offered also June 9, 2009 by Council Member Weaver.
Mr. Mayor moves 7G.
Second.
Any comments? Roll call.
Councilmembers, Raymond.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes.
Did we skip D, or did we do D?
We did D. We've done all of them, yes. At 8, under action items, at 8A is director of public works regarding banner request from Glendale Sunrise Rotary for use of city poles and light standards. At 8A1 is motion authorizing city manager to enter into an agreement with Glendale Sunrise Rotary.
Okay, Mr. Starbird.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I go to Steve Zernd, director of public works, for a brief staff report. Steve. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, has become, over the last couple of years, our policy when we have a request from a social club or an outside group to hang their banners on our light standards in the downtown area, we ask them to go through this very process of making the request, providing us with the proper insurance documentation, example of the banner that they wish to hang, the locations they wish them to be hung at, recognizing that they are responsible for those to be installed in and then taken down, and we specify the time period that they can be up. This is the second year that Glendale Sunrise Rotary has made this request for their, not even for a minute, reminding folks not to leave children in the car. That's the basics. There are 159 locations that they've requested, very similar to their request last year. We have Steve Robsfoel here representing the Sunrise Rotary, if you have any specific questions about the program.
Just very quickly, Steve, full costs are borne by the club?
Oh, absolutely. Yes.
All right, I have one speaker card, Steve Robsfoel. Some words to lose.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council and staff. I'd like to start off by showing a public service announcement that runs occasionally on GTV6.
Now, sit right here, don't touch anything. Mommy's gonna be right back.
It only takes seconds for the unthinkable to happen. Stop. Think. Remember. And whatever you do, never, ever leave children unattended in or around a vehicle, not even for a minute. For more information, go to notevenforaminute.org. Brought to you as a public service by the Los Angeles County Medical Association Alliance and the Glendale Sunrise Rotary Club.
Thank you very much. And also being passed out is the flyer that we're using this year. If you go ahead and approve this, you'll see that there's a wide variety of organizations in Glendale that are supporting our project. And on the back page, it also gives a little bit about what actually the consequences of leaving a child in and around a car unattended. This year's honorary chair is Fritz Coleman, once again lending his fabulous, good name to another Glendale project. Thank you very much. Yes.
A very good idea, very important issue. Why don't you mention how I see that groups or individuals or companies can actually sponsor some of the banners and would have their name at the bottom of the banner? Why don't you give us a phone number or some way to?
All right. I'd love to do that. Thank you very much. If anyone is interested in sponsoring a banner, they can call my co-chair, Andre Hafdiyani, at his office, and that number is 818-545-0904, or contact me at 818-482-1445. And we would be happy to get them some information on it. The chamber is also helping us get the word out by including this in their next mid-month mailing.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
I have just a few questions. Number one, is it the truth?
Yes, and it is fair to all concerned.
Will it build goodwill?
And better friendship.
And will it be, will it be beneficial to all concerned?
And then some.
You have passed the four-way test.
And yeah, since you've brought that up, we'll let the public know that.
You will receive my vote on this.
Thank you. What you're referring to is the four-way test, which is an ethical standard that all Rotarians strive to keep themselves, to live up to. Thank you very much.
I got to live long and prosper.
Hey, do I have a?
8A1.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers, Raymond.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next.
At 8B is acting director of community development and housing regarding fresh air ordinance, community outreach, update, and recognition of four Glendale businesses as Glendale fresh air zones. At B1 is a motion to note and file a report.
And Mr. Mayor, Sam Engel, Neighborhood Services Administrator, is here to give you a brief staff report. Sam.
Thank you, Mr. Starbird, and Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. You received a report in your city council packet giving you an update of where we are after six months of outreach and implementation for the city's fresh air ordinance. The city's effort to address secondhand smoke in public places has now been in effect for those six months. The report we're going to talk about tonight is just an overview of the written report that you got with regard to the implementation of this ordinance over the last six months. The original intent was to limit exposure to secondhand smoke by non-smokers in all publicly accessible places. It was not to eliminate smoking, nor was it to address the actual behavior of smoking. It was really from your direction to us, and we've looked at the council tapes a couple of times over the last couple of weeks in response to some of the questions we were anticipating. It was very clear in your direction that we were focusing on the issue of exposure to secondhand smoke. City council and staff knew at the time of adoption that this effort would not be accomplished overnight, and it would involve significant public outreach to affect a community behavioral change that would mark this program's success over the long haul. After six months, I want to report to you that, for the most part, the news is very good. There is an increased community awareness of the program, and people, both residents and business owners, have been working very hard to comply. I'd like to report to you that public places are not yet fully smoke-free, but breathable air is indeed fresher than it was just six months ago. Persons who smoke, I think, are a little more frustrated that the public areas that were formerly available to them are no longer available for the act of smoking. On the other hand, anti-smoking advocates are equally as frustrated in that they feel that our laws should be enforced at this point in time a lot more aggressively. Multifamily housing continues to be problematic. Smokers are frustrated about the regulations that they smoke in designated areas at multifamily rental housing, or if and they are residing in areas, in units, or actually in buildings that were designated as smoke-free, that they are prohibited from smoking in the common areas altogether. On the flip side of that, non-smokers are equally frustrated that the ordinance did not prohibit smoking altogether in multifamily units. Our position as staff at this point is council-struck, a very effective balance, and it will take some time to work through all of this. What's happening is buildings that are, for the most part, smoke-free are becoming more smoke-free. Buildings that, for the most part, have a large majority of smokers are probably tending to become more of that, which is intent with the original ordinance. I'd like to stress right now that as much outreach as we do, we can't seem to do enough of it. Your written report summarized a phenomenal number of things, from public service announcements to theater ads, to flyers, to brochures printed in four languages, to a bunch, to the cards that we all carry around and actually hand out whenever we're out there that summarizes our ordinance here, and then actually very directly says this, that is very effective when handed out in conjunction with the wearing of a city badge. As I said, we have movie ads running, we have articles that have been in the city's City View publication, which is very widely read. If Arminé, our outreach ambassador, were to come up and tell you, she can tell you the day City Views is published, because our phones light up with a number of articles, but with her job as the fresh air ambassador, she knows the day it comes out. Presentations have been made, news articles have been in the local papers, and we have talked to innumerable local businesses. One thing I would like to report to you, that the best way to communicate the message that you communicated to us is one-on-one. Getting the word out to our visitors to this community is indeed the hardest. We can reach our residents, we can reach our business owners, those people who are here as transient visitors to our community, who would be day workers, people who come into work during the day, and people who come to visit our communities to shop, restaurants, is the hardest part to reach for us. However, as a result of the public awareness from the program, we've learned of areas of town where even the state law that's banning smoking in workplaces has been violated. It's been very interesting, as you have directed us to raise the awareness, we have found other places where even places of employment where smoking was still going on. We are working with LA County Health Department to address these issues as they've come up. At this point in time, I'd like to highlight a couple of issues. In addition to the ones that were listed in your report of issues where we are right now, we have an additional suggestion that we would bring forward if we were asked to make adjustments in the ordinance. Currently, our ordinance has no requirements for no smoking signs to be placed in those areas where smoking might be prohibited. If we were to bring back an ordinance adjustment, we would request that we be, put a requirement in there that those be required to be installed in smoking-prohibited areas. Next, we would also be requesting that the ordinance be allowed, be revised, to allow citations to be written simply for the violation of smoking in a smoking-prohibited area rather than require a warning. In talking with our police officers, who have the responsibility, I think, for the majority of the enforcement in public areas, it's proving very problematic, mostly because our police are moving around all the time, and it's difficult to remember who's received a warning and who has not. The original strategy, I'd point out, anticipated that the park rangers would be primarily responsible for dealing with smoking issues in the city's parks. Now that the enforcement burden is falling on the police department and code enforcement officers, we're going to need to rethink this strategy. Tonight, staff is prepared to field questions and provide additional information. Before we do that, though, I would like to make some presentations on behalf of the city. Our original outreach strategy anticipated that businesses may want to declare themselves to be totally smoke-free by prohibiting smoking on their properties altogether. We would like to recognize four businesses tonight who have chosen to do that. Two of these businesses, I would like to point out, have been smoke-free far longer than when our city actually required it. To help me out, I'd like to introduce to you, if you haven't met her already, Arminé Jimenez, who's our fresh air ambassador. She's going to bring up the people that are going to receive our presentations tonight. Our four presentations, I'm going to start with the two that aren't here tonight. Now, let me start with the ones that are here. First off, I do that as well. First off, I'd like to recognize Sir Jagadagari, who's representing Raffi's Place Restaurant. Raffi's Place has been smoke-free for years and years and years. We felt that when we did our first fresh air zone awards, that Raffi's needed to be, if not the first one, but one of the first that received it. So on behalf of the City of Glendale, we're going to present to them their plaque where they can hang up and advertise to the community that they are indeed a fresh air zone in the City of Glendale.
Thank you very much.
There you go.
Do you see everyone at Raffi's?
There you go.
Next, as we embarked on this journey together, and it truly is that, and we first had our discussions, before we even had an ordinance, we had an area of town that decided they wanted to be smoke-free, and it is wanted to be smoke-free, and it is certainly, I think, our crown jewel in terms of downtown and the draw that draws everybody, and that's our Americana. And I would like to introduce Michael Proshanian from the Americana, our second fresh air zone presented. Michael?
Thank you. Keep this nice and short. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Two others that aren't here that have determined to be fresh air zones, not to be outdone by the Americana. The Glendale Galleria has determined that they are a fresh air zone. We met with them for a significant period of time, walked over all of their opportunities for them to actually have smoking designated areas. They went back and met with their operations staff, met with their management staff, and determined that, no, if this is important to the City of Glendale, it's important to them. And they did not want to be known as a place where people would go to shop and smoke. So they have determined themselves to be, just like the Americana, a Glendale fresh air zone, and we would be presenting them as well. The second restaurant, which has been smoke-free since they opened in Glendale, also well preceding our ordinance, is Islands. Matter of fact, they have a slogan, and that is paradise is smoke-free. If they had been here tonight, we would have recognized them as our fourth fresh air zone. Periodically, we will recognize these people. We think it's good for the community to know places where the air is clean. We also think it's good to promote our community, because it's been a tough battle, an opportunity to really bring these businesses forward. I mentioned outreach materials. There are brochures. Matter of fact, at this point in time, we've gone through probably, and I did a more accurate count, probably, how much? 12,000 of these have been handed out in four languages, the majority of them, obviously, in English. The fresh air stickers, which actually is that says no smoking, these are the window signs that we encourage people to put up voluntarily. We've gone through our second run of printing of these, and we think that we're well on the way. We are certainly, would like to hear your feedback at this point and see where we go over the next couple of months. Thank you, Mayor.
Well, let me start on the negative side. At 6:15, I went to get something to eat at, I forget what it's called, a shopping...
Oh, the Fashion Center?
Yeah, the Fashion Center, and got two doses of secondhand smoke there along the walkway.
Was it in the sidewalk, Mayor, or is it...
Yeah, well, but in the interior, in the interior of the shopping.
And that's the feedback I've given Sam almost since the inception of this program, is the issue of signage. It's very difficult to expect people that frankly haven't been tuned into this to know they can't smoke if they're not made aware of it, where the Fashion Center, or habit, or the food uses down along there. I don't think they have any signage. You see it as you go into the buildings, but there's nothing outdoors. And I've seen a number of restaurants, outdoor dining, that there really isn't any signage. And it's difficult to expect somebody to know if there isn't signage in a spot, so that's why that's one of the items that we need to follow up on, we think, and actually have a little more proactive requirements for signage, especially outdoor dining in plazas where there are public common areas where people shouldn't be smoking.
One of the people had her child in tow, so she had a hold of the young boy with one hand and a cigarette with the other. Anyway, any comments, or I have some speaker cards?
After the speakers, perhaps.
Okay, I'll start with Harvey Pearson, followed by Esther Schiller.
Mr. Mayor, council members, Esther Schiller should actually go first. She was there when I needed her, and was really getting a whole lot of secondhand smoke from the tenant. He would smoke all night underneath me in a multifamily residential building in Los Feliz. The gentleman has since deceased, and for five years, there was a new tenant who did not smoke. That tenant moved out a few months ago, and so I'm back on pins and needles, because it's a building the owner's decided on his own in Los Angeles that the common areas are smoke-free. But individual units, and I think it's that way in Glendale, due respect to Mr. Engel, if I remember right, you're allowed to smoke in units unless the owner has specifically said no smoking in the unit. And it's that way, anyway, in my apartment building. And as far as I knew, the owner wasn't telling any new tenant to come in that you could not smoke in the apartment underneath it. There's a person up there who's been harmed by secondhand smoke, and you can't smoke in that unit. So fortunately, the new tenant does not smoke. I would say as a minimum, and maybe in Glendale I could do this too, that the manager or the owner should, that the non-smoking tenant could request, maybe in writing, tell any new tenant that if you move into this apartment, let's say downstairs, over you is a non-smoker, and if you smoke, that smoke is going to go up into his apartment, and he's going to complain, and you'll be bothered by it. So be aware that if we can't tell you, okay, they're not that far along yet, that you can't smoke in your own apartment, but beware if you do, there is a non-smoker up there, and you're probably going to get your door knocked on, you're going to get your floor pounded on. You won't like that, maybe, but we got to tell you that, and that person probably won't take that apartment. Thank you very much. And that's how it should be, in other words, that you could take another apartment.
Esther Schiller, followed by Jenny Cleveland.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Esther Schiller. I'm Director of Safe Smoke-Free Air for Everyone and the Smoke-Free Apartment House Registry. What is being passed out is what I'm saying, and also our newsletter, which contains a lovely article about Glendale. I want to commend the council for passing a comprehensive ordinance for outdoor public areas in the city, and for beginning to regulate the problem of drifting tobacco smoke in multi-unit housing. Also, I think a commendation is in order for city staff, who've been conducting the most extensive and effective educational campaign that I've ever seen for this kind of an ordinance. I did see a staff recommendation that Sam didn't mention, and that was the suggestion that landlords, over time, be required to create a separation of smoking and non-smoking units in apartment buildings. And we have suggested that, and it's still a very good idea. In the past two years, we've received over 500 complaints from people who are breathing their neighbor's tobacco smoke where they live, and we find that the complaints are almost evenly divided between apartment residents and residents of condominiums. We believe the problem of drifting tobacco smoke is much more serious in a condominium, especially when the person who's being impacted owns the unit which is being filled with tobacco smoke. That owner cannot very easily move, and if he or she tries to sell the unit, they would have to disclose the problem of the tobacco smoke intrusion. Most people, even people who smoke, don't want to live in a place which is being infiltrated by a neighbor's tobacco smoke. If you were to consider regulating tobacco smoke in condominiums, I would like to suggest the following, and I've run this by people who live in condominiums, and they tell me they think it's a good idea. No smoking in common areas inside and outside, no smoking on balconies and patios, and then you get to read the rest of it by yourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Jenny Cleveland, followed by Stephen Gallegos.
I am so thrilled that people living in apartments in Glendale no longer have to live in a smoke-filled environment in their own home. I have a condominium in Glendale that I've lived in for almost 10 years. For the last almost five years, I've had a smoker who stands right below me on his balcony and smokes a lot, every day, when he's home. And, you know, they're eight-foot ceilings, he's six-foot tall, he stands there, and all of the smoke comes directly into my bedroom, into my home. It gets in my hair, it gets in my sheets, it gets in my pillows. I wake up choking on it. It gets in my food. He'll go to the front and smoke in the front also. It comes in my kitchen window. And this is a serious problem. There are almost four times as many deaths due to secondhand smoke as there are to drunk driving incidents, which is also a serious problem. So I would just like to request that this be extended to condominium complexes. And another issue is, if I were to rent out my condo, which the tenant would consider an apartment, it would be rented as a smoke-free apartment, because I don't want somebody smoking inside the unit. However, there would be somebody below the tenant that was smoking and filling that unit with cigarette smoke. And so, and they would consider it to be an apartment that would have cigarette smoke in it. So I would just like to request that it be extended to include all of us. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Stephen Gallegos, followed by Robert Phipps.
Good evening, Mayor Quintana, members of the Glendale City Council.
You said Quintana.
Quintero. Pardon me. Faux pas. My name is Stephen Gallegos, and I am a resident of Glendale, and actually born here. And I'm really, really proud of what this city has done. I'm also Chair of the Coalition for Tobacco-Free Los Angeles County, and Glendale's reputation has gone far and wide. You have created a model that most cities are now aspiring to. As I go and speak at other City Council meetings because of my position as Chair of the Coalition for the Tobacco-Free L.A. County, and I say that I'm from Glendale. I'm just full of it tonight. When I tell them I'm from Glendale, they want to know how Glendale did it, and how the City Council showed such courage in moving forward and being progressive. And I just refer them to the great staff that we have here at the city, Sam and Stephen, and the great job that they've done in setting a model and a mantle. Now, I'm also an apartment renter here in Glendale, and the people who are my neighbors have gone from smoking quite a bit to not smoking as much because of the concerns of how secondhand smoke affects them. And I try to educate them and give them information about it. I also live next to some apartment owners who live in their units up and down my street, and they're just as concerned because of the costs involved every time that a smoker moves out, and how much more they have to pay in expenses. And usually, the tenant does not get their damage deposit back because of the damage done to the carpets, the paint, the walls, the curtains, et cetera, et cetera. So it's something that's being talked about and a concern of just apartment renters and owners, and I thank you very much for addressing this.
Thank you. Robert Phipps.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, members of the council, staff. I'm Robert Phipps. I'm a former smoker and a cancer survivor. I've got a lot of experience in the smoking cause, anti-smoking cause, in Burbank and other places. Smokers are addicted, I know. It's extremely difficult to quit, and they will smoke anywhere they're allowed to smoke. If we didn't have ordinances, state ordinances, they would still smoke indoors. You have a sign in this very building downstairs that says no smoking for that very reason, because they'd smoke there if not prohibited. Signs are crucial. You now have an outdoor smoking regulation. Thank you, and congratulations. It's city by city, moving forward that way. Signs are critical. There's a scofflop period. Every city from Calabasas on has gone through this. An ordinance is passed, and the first few people say, "I'm going to smoke, try to stop me." A month goes by, they get tired of it. You get tired of breaking the law all the time. I used to be a teenager, I know. And it's just, they finally wear down and they comply, they obey. So I recommend strongly that you put signs... Another thing that's important with it is that, as a non-smoker, if there's a sign there and someone's smoking, I can tell the person it's against the law to smoke here, and not worry about a verbal or physical confrontation. Most people will be wary of any kind of confrontation if someone's smoking and there's no signs around, even if it's prohibited. So I recommend that you put signs in place. It'll go much smoother all around. Thank you.
Thank you. Evelyn Hansen, followed by Laurie Collins.
Hi, Evelyn Hansen, longtime resident of Glendale. Thank you. We are, like, on the way to being a smoke-free city, and I'm so glad to be a member of a community that is on the forefront of this. It is wonderful to hear somebody say that other cities are looking to us to see what we did, instead of us constantly saying, "Well, what are other cities doing? Can we do that? Are other cities, is Burbank doing that?" Rather, they're looking to us to lead the way, and this is something great to lead the way on. I would ask for more enforcement. I'll definitely pass out those cards and brochures. Heck, I've got a park behind me, I've got an apartment building with smokers on both sides who smoke and bother my tenants, and then, of course, let us dispose of their cigarette butts for them, because they can't be bothered to do it themselves. I'd love an ordinance that lets us help them learn to throw their own cigarette butts away if they have to endanger our health. Thank you.
Thank you. Laurie Collins, followed by Robert Berger.
Good evening. My name's Laurie Collins. First, I want to thank council for enacting this ordinance. I think it's one of the most important ordinances you've ever enacted, because it definitely will affect the health and welfare of the people of the City of Glendale and the visitors. I'm hoping that, I know it's a difficult issue, but you'll be able to spend additional time trying to craft an amendment to the ordinance so you can protect some of the apartment owners. It must just be awful for an apartment dweller to be living in their apartment at a certain rent for years and years and have a smoker move in next door, and I'm not sure if there's something you can do to help them, but I would encourage you to do that. I am very pleased with the efforts the city has made to try to enforce this and try to educate. I think it is very important that you educate people about how it is an important health issue, and I hope that you're spending as much time as you can in the open space areas in the parks, not only because of fire issues, and the parks near the hills, but also because I think it historically has been a community gathering area for people to play chess and naturally smoke, and I'm hoping that your Parks Department can spend as much time as you can, given the money constraints, to properly police those properties. Thank you.
Robert Berger.
Good evening. My name's Robert Berger. I'm here representing the American Lung Association of California, and I'm really here mostly to thank you, not only for passing this, you know, leading policy, but for taking the time to examine it and seeing, are you doing as much as you can to successfully implement the policy. I can assure you that this will get easier and easier over time, because this is now becoming the social norm. This is not like one community among many. You are leading the way. We are currently working on a smoke-free outdoor dining policy in the City of Los Angeles, and I could tell you that Glendale was one of the models that they looked at. So you really are providing leadership. The more cities that do this, the more it will become the social norm, and you will look back at some point in the not-too-distant future and say, "This is the way it is in terms of smoke-free public places," and that you are on the leading edge of making that happen. So on behalf of the staff, the board, the members of the American Lung Association, thank you.
Thank you. This is a final card. Anahid Pinedian.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Quintero, members of City Council, audience, and all people who work hard on this ordinance to pass. Thank you. I am very pleased for this ordinance. I'm working as volunteer to pass all this brochure in different locations in order to everybody look on this brochure, how the City Council members, all of the staff, and Neighborhood Division working hard in order to keep our city fresh air, a smoke-free air. Thank you again.
That ends oral communication. Any comments, Mr. Najarian, then Mr. Weaver?
In addition to the actions referenced in the agenda item, mainly to receive and file this report, I want to raise an issue that perhaps was an oversight on the part of council. When we were discussing this ordinance, which I think we all felt at the time was a, trying to balance the rights between smokers and non-smokers, we obviously did a good job. We received an A by the American Lung Association and have become a model for cities throughout the state. During that discussion... During that discussion, one of the areas that I spoke about on July 29th at about the third hour or so of the meeting, because I've gone back and reviewed the tape, was to exclude houses of worship from the restrictions on this ordinance. That direction was not picked up and was not included in the ordinance when we voted on it. It was perhaps as much an oversight on my part as anyone else's. But I would like to bring that back and amend the ordinance or craft an amendment to the ordinance to include houses of worship. And the reason doing so is that the freedom of religion is a First Amendment right. Many religions, including the Armenian Orthodoxy and the Armenian Apostolic Church, use incense and create smoke. By our definition, that is an included item in the prohibited function and prohibited activities. So, I would like to bring that back and create an amendment excluding houses of worship from this ordinance.
I would agree to that as long as we kept it to the actual services rather than any bingo that might be taking place. That's a totally different distinction. So, sure, we can craft the ordinance along those lines.
Well, here's my only problem with that is when you talk about bingo. And let's talk about what we're doing here. We're talking about different rooms. We're gonna have to get into each houses of worship room and decide where their chamber is. Bingo, as I understood, is conducted on the ground level in the basement. During some holidays, Easter for one, that is used as an overflow room for religious services. And the incense also is presented, is burned in that room as well. My problem is we're gonna be getting into the house of worship and their activities and become over regulatory. Because it's a protected right under the Constitution of the United States, I don't want to get into a house of worship at all. If it's a house of worship, I think we have to stay out of there.
Well, I disagree. There's a distinction between worship and a distinction between organized games that either raise funds or whatever it is. We'll let the city attorney figure out how to work through that. Mr. Drayman.
Well, actually, Mr. Mayor, you landed on it, what I was going to ask anyway, and that is that whatever the determination will be, that'll come out when we agendize it and have that discussion. But in terms of having the discussion and the, on that, I remember very distinctly your request, Mr. Najarian. And that was our understanding at the time. I think all of us, I think there was unanimous consensus that houses of worship would be exempt. As to this particular debate, we can have that when we bring it back. But I would join in asking that we bring that back.
Any other? Mr. Weaver?
When I started this smoking ordinance thing, I don't know, a couple of years ago, I didn't know what we would go through or how successful we would be. At the time, it was a decision not to include apartments or condos. I wanted to. I'll give you one more example. Jenny Cleveland, who spoke here, what she said about the person below her, she left out one sentence in the email she sent to all of us, which is when she asked the man below her to smoke inside his unit to keep the majority of his smoke from entering her home above, he told her that he didn't want his home to smell of cigarette smoke. So, he's doing it outside to keep his. And how often do you see smokers, they smoke and the hand goes out here to avoid the smoke to them, but to come to others? I hope that there's enough support maybe now, based on what we have seen, community response, to again look at apartments and condos. Because I've got many emails over the months since we incorporated or put the ordinance into effect, talking about these conditions which are hurting children and families that have smokers below them. I think we've got to get a way to put condos and apartments that can have smokers in it separate. So, whether they're up or down, they're all smoking, separate them out from those that do not want that secondhand smoke. So, I know it's a note and file, but I hope we do do it, bring it back. I do believe on citations, yeah. And the no-smoking ordinance modifications, of course. I don't know. This is a note and file, Mr. Starber, so will we need to make a separate motion to give direction to bring it back?
No, staff has the feedback. We've made a note and we will bring that back along with the other items of Mr. Engelman.
For discussion.
For an update on the ordinance and discussion and direction.
And we'll get into another three-hour debate on it. Why not? It's for the good of the people of Glendale.
Ms. Friedman.
Well, I wasn't on this dais when this ordinance was passed, but I'm very glad to have inherited it. I would second Mr. Weaver's desire to take a look at apartments. And I thought that one of the speaker's suggestion of over time apartments, apartment owners creating blocks that are no-smoking sections as people move out, sounds like it might be a reasonable alternative to sort of grandfather people in if they're already smoking. But I would certainly look at going further. I do have a question about the ordinance. Does it cover, I don't know who I should be looking at. Does it cover people who might be smoking on public streets in the hillside areas? And the reason I ask is because when I lived in Hollywood 15 years ago, it's a state law, well, they were very well noticed in the Hollywood Hills, for instance, for fire prevention, that you can't sit in your car, smoke and throw cigarettes out the window or walk around on the streets. And as someone who lives in the Hills, I see it all the time and it's terrifying to anyone who lives up there in the brush. And if there's any way we can, if it's not allowed in our city, if there's a way we can add signage as to the major entries into the hills or brush areas, I think we should look at that for safety reasons.
Councilwoman Friedman, members of the city council, that's already covered in the Uniform Fire Code. Interestingly, we as staff have been having a kind of philosophical discussion. Part of the direction that you had given us, and we take this direction very seriously, is that you wanted us to do education and outreach first. And we thought, Stephen and I and Arminé in particular, that using the fire code to deal with smoking as a way to circumvent the required warning that you very specifically wrote into the ordinance wasn't the right way to go in the first six months. And we had some effort to try and do that. If it's illegal to smoke, if this ordinance, your secondhand smoke ordinance says that it's illegal to smoke in these public places of assembly, then we need to use that ordinance. If it's illegal to smoke in fire-prone areas, then we need to use that ordinance. We shouldn't apply this one to deal with this one. The way to fix that is to bring this ordinance back and fix the problem with it. And that's what we propose to do. We take very seriously your direction to do the outreach and education and that's one of the results of it. But yes, it's already in, to short answer your question, it's already in the fire code. And in the hillside brush areas, the park rangers actually do that and so do police.
Would we be putting, we modify, would we be putting signs at the beginning of fire roads, et cetera?
We have some signs up. I think uniformly, we're all hearing there's not enough of them. So, we probably need to get more of those up. And those are actually a different code section, allows then police and fire to cite under that code because it's noticed.
But the signage itself, is that what we want to add to this ordinance in order to be able to give you the?
You don't need to. We just need to put more signs up, from our perspective.
Thank you. Thanks for the clarification. I see that it was an off-topic comment then, but thank you for that.
Any other comments?
Okay.
I'll move to 8B1. Second, you've been given direction.
Thank you, Ms. Drayman. You're doing a good job. Roll call.
Councilmember Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes. Next, please.
At 8C is Director of Public Works regarding banner requests from the Americana brand on behalf of Gigi's Farmers Market for the use of city poles and light standards. At C1 is motion authorizing placement of banners and agreement with the Americana brand.
Mr. Starber? Mr. Mayor, this is a bit of a banner evening, again to Mr. Zern. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as was the case with the previous item regarding the Glendale Sunrise Rotary, Gigi's Farmers Market, in partnership with Raw Inspiration, has made a request to hang banners on our light standards in the downtown area. They have, as I had mentioned before, provided us with the proper documentation, insurance. They will be fully responsible financially and otherwise to put the banners up and to remove them in the agreed-upon time, which is a 30-day span. They've asked for the first 30-day period they can get, so that will be very shortly. They have provided you with, I believe, an updated graphic of what that vertical banner will look like. And they've also passed out, or had Anna Maria pass out to you, a packet of seeds with their logo on it. That said, we have representatives from, Mr. Lamo is here representing Caruso affiliated in the Americana, if there should be any questions.
Are there any questions? Comments? Mr. Najarian?
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers.
Your name for the record?
Rick Lamo.
Who is this Gigi?
Mr. Najarian, I understand that she's that funny little, sunny little...
Well, I will defer to Councilmember Drayman's answer because it's much better than mine.
And what does the rooster symbolize?
Laying eggs?
Well, I'm not, I guess that's...
French country living?
More of a, more of a country, kind of organic.
Because I have rooster chickens all over my kitchen. I keep asking my wife, "What's this about?" And, you know, she says, "Oh, you ignoramus. It's French country style. Don't you..."
Well, far be it from me to use her same terminology.
Okay, so you're saying...
It's good to have those chickens all over your kitchen. Can we get some of these banners in your kitchen? Tell your friends. Are there any other questions I could answer for you?
Yeah, why isn't it cardinal? You know, I mean, Rick went to USC. That's good. But as far as Gigi's, that's French, right?
That is correct. No, actually...
I was watching the D-Day ceremony, the president, in France, and there was a statue there. And my family looked at it and says, "That's in the Americana. It's the same statue from France." So, the tie between Gigi's was the French and the statue, which is from France. There's your answer.
And I'm glad that you were able to notice it, that our president was in fact in front of the original Spirit of America.
That's where Rick got the idea, right?
That's where he got the idea. And the gentleman who operated the foundry and cast the Spirit of America, Spirit of American Youth here in Glendale was actually the apprentice for the casting that you saw in Normandy.
Really? Little trivia.
Mr. Drayman.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move 8C1.
Second.
Okay. And how long are the banners gonna be up?
30 days.
The 30 days. Okay. Any other comments? Roll call.
Councilmember Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
We.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Say hello, Friedman.
Next, please.
At 8D is Director of Administrative Services Finance regarding adoption of cities 2009, 2010 GA and then appropriation limit, GAN limit at 1 is resolution adopting appropriation limit.
Do I have any comments?
No.
I'll move it. This is a requirement under the state constitution.
State constitution, it is implemented by state law, yes.
Second.
Any comments? Mr. Starber?
Just to point out, Mr. Mayor, there are probably a few people in the room who were involved in government back when this was passed. I wasn't, but Bob Elliott's old enough, he remembers it.
I was in junior high, actually.
It is interesting that if we had an additional $50 million, we would be able to spend it because we are $50 million under the limit established by the GAN initiative back in 1979. So, we are well under that limit. Staff recommends approval.
Okay. Should I have a motion?
Yeah, you have it.
Roll call.
Councilmember Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes. Next, please.
At 8E is Director of Planning regarding identification of designated historic districts through the implementation of Historic District Gateway Sign Program. At E1 is motion establishing Gateway Sign Program for Designated Historic Districts and directing staff to proceed with implementation.
Mr. Drayman.
I just would state, Mr. Mayor, that I support this. I like the design very much. I'll be happy to move 8E1.
I'll second it. It's nice design.
Do we have a graphic for the public?
We do have a slide of it.
Unveil it.
We do have a sample.
There.
Unreal metal.
Is that genuine metal?
Genuine.
Genuine metal.
And not sure what's going on. Here we go.
Original seal of the city of Glendale. Original city seal.
Yes, the early city seal.
Was there any room for the names of the councilmembers who...
They're on the back. It's on the head.
Okay. We'll pass on that.
Okay, nice sign. And I think will absolutely make the historic districts stand out. I want to thank Elaine Wilkinson, who is in the audience tonight, for all of the work she put into historic districting and especially Royal Boulevard. I'll give her a nickname, the Zarina of historic districts.
John Lacassio is also here, who's the president of the...
That's right, John Lacassio. Thank you all. It's a very good idea. Certainly brings distinction to Glendale's beautiful neighborhoods. Did I get a motion?
Yeah.
We have a motion, a second already.
There is a motion and a second. There, roll call. Councilmember Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes. Next, please.
At 8E is Director of Planning regarding registration of historic resources listing and Mills Act contract for the property at 1675 Art Even Avenue. At B1 is resolution designating the property as historic resource and authorizing Mills Act contract.
Mr. Starber?
Yes, let me go up to the Director of Planning, Hassan Nagani.
Jay Platt has some slides related to these proposals, if you'd like to see them.
Yep.
Okay, we have three Glendale register nominations and Mills Act applications tonight. The first, I'll run through them fairly quickly if you'd like. 1675...
One at a time.
One at a time, sure. You need to vote.
Shall I read it? Okay. Well, at C and D, Director of Planning regarding Glendale register of historic resources listing and Mills Act contract for the property at 1535 North Pacific Avenue. C1 is resolution designating property as historic resource and authorizing Mills Act contract. At D is Director of Planning, again, regarding the Glendale register and historic resource listing and Mills Act. And this is for the address at 1455 Royal Boulevard. And there's also resolution designating the property as a historic resource and authorizing Mills Act contract.
That's great.
Okay, we're out of order. And here we go, 1455 Royal Boulevard. This is located on Royal Boulevard, which you're all fully aware of because it's in the Royal Boulevard Historic District. It's a lovely French provincial revival-style house that was built in 1936. It was designed by the architect, strangely enough, who did the municipal services building. But he didn't do this alone because the house was part of a promotion... Historic District. It's a lovely French provincial revival-style house that was built in 1936. It was designed by the architect, strangely enough, who did the Municipal Services Building. But he didn't do this alone, because the house was part of a promotion from McCall's Magazine, which was an important ladies' magazine of the period, coming out of the Depression to kind of promote homeownership and new home building with innovative designs. So while this house looks very traditional, it was very innovative, because all of the common spaces, the living room and dining room areas in the house, were pushed to the back, so that they opened into the backyard, giving it that kind of California, kind of mid-century living style. And the kitchen and kind of the service areas are at the front. Here's another view of the house, which has all of, most of the hallmark styles of the French provincial, especially these segmentally arched dormer windows that peek above the cornice line, fairly austere, blocky facade, with beautifully proportioned window openings. You can see the house here on the map of Royal Boulevard. It's a contributing structure in the Historic District. And here's, whoops, here's a picture of the cover of the 1936 McCall's issue that featured this house. And we should note that this design was proposed for five cities around the country, one of which was Glendale, which is very interesting. And it was promoted by the Rossmoyn Properties Incorporated Development that had taken over the development of the Royal Boulevard area after the Depression. So you can see the house in that drawing was actually expanded upon, so that was a smaller version.
Is that the same house?
It's very, if you look at the, chop off the right side, yeah, chop off the right side.
Oh, I see.
And it's pretty much the same house. And so they just felt it was a little small for the clientele that was moving on to Royal Boulevard, so they made it a slightly bigger house. Here's a great photo that we've seen a few times over the last couple of years of early Royal Boulevard, and there's the house itself. One of the great things about the Mills Act is that, working with the owner here, during a remodel in the 60s, you can see the garage in the bottom photo to the right side. The roof of that garage was taken off, so a loss of some of the character of the property. And the owners currently would like to put that back on, and that would be part of the Mills Act contract, which is the goal of the contract, is to enhance these properties for the people who are getting property tax breaks. The Historic Preservation Commission saw this and believed that it met both parts of criterion D for designation.
Do you have the photo that, on this slide, I guess you don't, the photograph that used in the newspaper when they were promoting this, that you have in our packet?
Yeah, I didn't put that in the presentation, so it's cool.
Cards on this?
I have no speaker cards.
You have to open the...
Yeah, the owner, the owner is here in support, if you have any questions.
You have to open the...
I'll open the public hearing. I have no cards. I'll close the public hearing.
Mayor with nine B one.
Question.
Sorry.
I have some questions. It's a beautiful house, and I think I was in this house. Didn't you have the Royal Block Party there a couple of years back? This is in a historic district. What is there, is it redundant to classify this as a Mills Act if the home is already in the historic district? Or what extra protections or extra benefit is there for declaring it a Mills Act if it's in a historic district already?
Well, in a district, a district property that becomes individually designated kind of rises to a higher level of importance. This one does primarily because of the McCall's connection, and then also just its fine architecture, and its relatively rare style in Glendale. But being in the Mills Act gives us full protection of the entire envelope of the house and the grounds, whereas being in the Glendale, being in a historic district, we're only looking at the areas that you can see from the street. So it's, it's basically a higher level of protection, but there's the expectation, because the owner gets a tax break, that they're going to put some of that money back into the house, so.
Thank you very much.
It's a public benefit.
That's my only question.
Okay. Mr. Drayman.
Just wanted to just point out, Mr. Platt, and I know you know this, but the, the ad in McCall's Magazine that lists the different sites for this style, one in California, not only has the address, but also mentions that the property is furnished by Barker Brothers.
Right.
Was this one of several homes that they did throughout the country? Is that what?
We don't know. There were, there were five that were promoted in the ad. We don't know if any of the other ones were built. But it, it's kind of nice that Glendale was singled out among, you know, all the cities in the country they could have chosen.
I see that, yeah. Can I have a motion, but I need a second?
Yes.
Second.
Second.
Counsel. This, this motion was for nine B one, which is the house at Art Even. And I don't know if you wanted to see any pictures on that. You...
I'm sorry.
Up to nine D. They were all read into the record, and that's fine, but you haven't seen any...
May I withdraw my motion?
I'll withdraw the second.
Okay, now can I move nine D one?
I'll second.
Do you want to go ninety? That's fine.
How do they get mixed up?
Councilmembers, Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. All right, the next home?
Are we going back to?
Now we're going to C.
That's correct, Charlie.
You have your water wings.
I just want to make sure I'm on the right one, so, because I had them backwards. It doesn't matter. Okay. 1675 Art Even Avenue. Again, this is inside the Art Even Historic District, at the corner of Art Even and just below Cumberland. It's a very grand Tudor Revival-style house that was built in 1924. One of the things that makes this property most interesting is that it was designed by Alfred Priest, and I'll show you a couple of his buildings, but he's probably the most important architect who was working in early Glendale. This was identified in the survey for Cumberland Heights as a possible Glendale Register property. The Historic Preservation Commission looked at it and agreed, and it is now a contributing building in the Art Even Highlands Historic District, and is under consideration for the Register and the Mills Act. Here are a couple of the details, just kind of the half-timbering up in the gable, the kind of elaborate but off-center kind of door surround is really distinctive of the Tudor Revival style. Here are some shots around the back. And the picture on the right's interesting, because that's the garage in the caretaker's house, so the same level of attention, of detail, and Alfred Priest's part went into that, kind of back, back-of-house building, and it's also been kept up over the years. So this house has all of its original windows. The garage has all of its original windows. It's really something we don't see all the time, and that's why we think these are worthy of register listing. Going back to Alfred Priest, probably his most prominent building is at 100 North Brand, the security, what was the Security Trust and Savings Bank. It was the tallest building in town for years. And he did a couple of other noteworthy buildings, the Kiefer and Eric Mortuary, which is the beautiful building down near the library that's now with the Assistance League, and the auditorium at Hoover High. We don't know too much about his kind of residential architecture, so it's kind of exciting that this one's been identified as his work and might be put on the register. The commission felt that this met two criteria, not only the architecture criteria, but also the one for association with significant people in the history of the city, and that would be Alfred Priest.
Sure.
Quick question. Would any of these three houses still have been eligible for the Mills Act and for a property tax reduction and for listing in a historic district if the windows have been swapped out with vinyl?
Because these are basically nominated on their architecture, that would make it difficult. A building theoretically that was nominated for a significant person or significant event in the history of the city could possibly pass the criteria. I think there'd be an expectation that, as those vinyl windows failed in the few years, we'd need to replace them, and we'd go back to something that was more historically appropriate.
Okay, just curious. Thanks.
Well, hey, vinyl walls, I put mine in 1971. They've never been painted, and they still all work. So they don't fade away.
I was thinking far into the future.
More than 30...
But at some, at some point, they would probably need to be replaced, so.
Maybe. See, what do you need a motion on nine B?
No, it's C.
Nine C one now.
No, this is nine B one. We're back to the beginning.
I was right. Nine B one.
There is a motion?
Sorry.
Second?
I, I find it interesting that Mr. Priest, who obviously was quite an architect, we've got this long list of the different buildings that he did. He basically, Mr. Priest's only professional education was gained through night school and by working for various local architects. He later set up, in 1911, he set up his own practice in downtown Los Angeles. But think about that. He built the buildings that, that are still standing today, historically significant, but basically he was a self-taught man. He couldn't do that at this point in time.
Today, you need a master's degree at least.
You need a master's degree. And actually, he was also a member of the American Institute of Architects and a director of the State Association of California Architects. Roll call, Mr.?
Councilmembers, Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next.
See, fifteen thirty-five North Pacific Avenue is the last of our nominations today. This is up on the, at the very north end of Pacific, above Kenneth Road. And this is a really interesting house that was built in 1923. We don't know the architect. It was built by a local builder, which is very common for houses in Glendale. The early permits didn't ask anyone to list an architect, so it's very rare that we actually find out who did build them. This house gave us kind of a challenge when we were coming to figure out what style it is, because most of the houses we deal with in Glendale, you say it's a Spanish, it's a Mediterranean, it's a colonial. This house was looking like more and more bits and pieces of different styles. And you can see some of the characteristics here of the deep eaves and those brackets holding up the eaves, this projecting porch over the front that turns into a port cochere. And then on top of that is a terrace that serves the upstairs bedroom. It's really kind of a complicated house, very interesting. And then you have those pointed arches, which we haven't really seen around town. Here are a few more details. What we came up with for our staff report to the Historic Preservation Commission was that it kind of copped out and said it's eclectic, with kind of an arts and crafts, Mediterranean, and even a prairie-style influence kind of going into it. Here's the back of the house, and as with all our properties, we look to make sure that the integrity of these properties is consistent, not just on the front, but at the back. And that was the case with this house. And the commission found that it was significant under the architecture criterion for both parts, that it's one of the best examples of its style, which is a rare style in the neighborhood, and that it also has outstanding design and attention to detail.
Comments?
Yeah, I just have one. Today, could that kind of house get through our design review board?
I hope so.
Because it's not Spanish, it's not Mediterranean, it's not French. What did you call it, eclectic?
Yeah, because it has, has a fallback. But I think a house with the design characteristics here really comes together as, as a real piece of architecture.
You'll be happy to know that people do sometimes use the term eclectic to describe, describe the style in front of design review board. So it's an accepted style. I've seen people come in with that.
Because I can see neighbors saying, well, that's not compatible with the neighborhood.
That's a good point.
It's the only one.
I think the better question is not whether it could get through design review, but whether anyone would bring that to design.
That's true, too. I'll move eight C one. I got the right one, yeah?
Second.
Councilmembers, Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes.
Nine A is Director of Administrative Services Finance Regarding Proposal, Proposed Budget of the City of Glendale for fiscal year 2009, 2010.
Mr. Starber.
Starber, would you please explain what we're doing with this?
Pardon me?
What we're doing with this. I have, now, there's no motion, anything. We're just taking tests.
Yes, I'll be happy to. Mr. Mayor, the Charter requires that, prior to adoption of the budget for an upcoming fiscal year, the city council hold a public hearing to receive public input on that budget. And this is the anointed public hearing for that purpose. You have had, however, six budget study sessions, whereby my count, you've been somewhere on the other side of 40 hours devoted to studying the budget and its implications. And of course, you have had public members commenting at those, I think, every one of those meetings. So a public hearing after six study sessions would seem to be redundant, but it is required by the Charter prior to adoption of the budget. Some brief comments, and I'll turn to Bob Elliott, who's really been kind of the ringmaster of these presentations. I think for anybody who's been associated with the Glendale organization for a long time will say this is one of the most difficult budget years, both the one that we're in, 2008, '09, and the one that's ahead of us, 2009, '10, for which you're holding a public hearing this evening. So well over a year and a half ago, the city council and your staff began to grapple with what, back then, we identified as a very challenging budget going into fiscal year 2008, '09, and it only got worse as the year went on. So you have had a full 18 months, I think, of consistent work on the budget, dealing with the implications of the evolving national economy and its impact on our local resources. And you have taken numerous steps to make sure this year's budget remains balanced, and it will. And in all likelihood, we will actually close the year with the general fund having in excess of $1 million in savings, as opposed to a deficit, but a savings, which is part of our strategy for the upcoming year, 2009, '10. You'll be looking at applying that savings to help offset the continuing worsening impacts. While we bring you a budget for public input, we do have to say this is also a year when I think this will be a budget that, after its adoption, we will again continue to work on. It'll be a budget that is full of all kinds of question marks, both with respect to local resources and the full implications of many of the cost-saving measures that it will attempt to implement. But also, with respect to the state budget, I can't imagine a year, at least none that I've been involved in, when there are so many question marks at the local city level that are dependent on the outcome of the state's budget, which, as you know, is currently in very deep crisis, and in all likelihood, will not be resolved until well after July 1, the start of your budget year, at which time you're obligated to have a city budget balanced and in place, and we'll do that. Just today, we continued to hear of directions the state could be taking that will impact our state gas tax, our general fund resources, our redevelopment agency resources. In fact, the, the Combined Finance Committee, that has been considering many of the efforts by the state to balance its budget, passed out of committee a three-year takeaway from redevelopment agencies of over $1 billion. For our agency, that'll probably be $3.5 million a year for at least the next three years. There's still consideration of taking gas tax resources, which could easily cost us, in the neighborhood, of $3.5 million a year in gas tax revenues. And although the governor has indicated, and the finance committee now seems to have also indicated, no support for borrowing from local government, that is very little security, when, while saying they won't borrow revenues from us under Proposition 1A, which they're allowed to do one time prior to its repayment. With the other hand, they then take absolutely critical resources away from the city that are helping to maintain our streets. So this is going to be a year, in the upcoming year, of continued focus on the budget. It'll probably be the most important thing we continue to work on, and probably one of the most frustrating things we continue to work on. But with that, with that sort of caveat, that, that even after its adoption, we will continue to work on it, it will be a living document well after July 1. I'll turn to Bob Elliott for an overview. Bob?
Thank you, Mr. Starber. I guess we could call this the eclectic budget. First of all, I want to say thank you to my staff, Michelle Flynn, Adurnia Sayan, and Michelle Nguyen. You know, I may be the ringmaster, but they're the animal tamer's. They deal with all the departments and have done an unbelievable job in a very, very difficult year.
I want to apologize for analogy. We can drop it now.
As Mr. Starber said, we've had a number of meetings throughout the course of this budget year, and they are shown up on the screen. I will have to make a correction, as we thought this would be the final budget study session this morning. Apparently, we'll do another one next week, so that has been corrected. Just by way of background, how we got into the budget in '08, '09, obviously, everybody's aware of the credit and banking issues that have hit the, the world scene. Our auto sales with the plight of General Motors and Chrysler, our Chrysler dealership changing, I guess, now to a used car dealership, has impacted our auto sales and subsequently our sales tax. Our, with the economy slowing, our construction-related revenues are down. We've had a number of retail outlets closing, Mervyn's and Circuit City to name a few. Our unemployment is hovering around 10%, which has obviously put a strain on a lot of our financial resources in the community. As you recall, at our mid-year budget update, we reduced the '08, '09 revenues by 8.5 million. Since then, as Mr. Starber said, we have been looking at different cuts, ways to save money. We implemented the hard hiring freeze this year and intend to carry that over into '09, '10. We have asked departments, or asked departments to prepare 5% and 7.5% cuts. Many departments have cut up to the... Many departments have cut up to the 7.5% of those. We have gone through it in very much detail as each department has presented their budget overviews. We continue to look at different organizational restructuring efforts or other opportunities. We closed Passport Services. We're combining graphics, downsized graphics back into the general fund, et cetera. We have significantly reduced and restricted a lot of the capital outlay, travel and training, and that we plan that to continue. And we've talked at length about various evaluations of our expenditures and our continued cost-saving efforts. March 3, again, the mid-year budget update. We eliminated 23 additional positions for a total of 66 positions being eliminated. For my, during my career, I've never seen that done at a mid-year, so that is very, very unusual. We suspended the general fund transfer to the CIP. The strategy at the time was to use gas tax funds to relieve the general fund obligation for streets that obviously will probably be revisited with the issue with the gas tax in the state. Additionally, we moved all the project management staff to the CIP in order to avoid the inherent subsidy of the general fund for those staff with not all the charges being sent to the CIP fund. So again, the numbers, that was the initial estimate for '09, '10, showing our $9.6 million shortfall. Throughout the various study sessions, we went through all the issues, department by department, all the different cost reduction strategies. Again, the 5% and 7.5%, we reviewed the capital improvement program and asked council for direction on all these issues. Moving through the budget process, as we updated and implemented or recommended certain things throughout the course of the study sessions, we implemented the cost allocation plan, which brought $2 million back to the general fund. We are progressing with our fleet consolidation, combining all four garages into one operation in one separate fund and relying on that one-time reduction or benefit to the general fund. We're relying or estimating that we'll have $1 million in salary, or savings for '08, '09 that we can use for '09, '10, as Jim alluded to earlier. And we have the $280,000 adjustment for some of the stuff as we fine-tuned it. All that being said, we had, at that point, a $5.9 million shortfall. Additional strategies as we move through the study sessions, the GFFA came up with a coal elimination of 4.5% that equated to $1.2 million. Our initial estimate for the department reductions was 3.9, or 3.5, excuse me. The fire department came up with a new BLS delivery model for savings of $600,000. We're estimating other departmental organizational consolidations, including EHS, to net a reduction of $400,000. We reduced the transfer, our initial transfer estimate to the paramedic fund by $800,000. We consolidated, downsized the graphics in Channel 6 and moved them back to the general fund and put them into the cost allocation, so there's actually those costs being spread throughout the city to other funds. Again, there were some other adjustments that we came to, and then the initial, or the, as we talked about this morning, the $263,000 net gap, which we would assume would be made up by cost savings. And that would be your proposed balanced budget. Again, in detail, the $164 million, that's the breakdown of the salaries of $129 million, the M and O of 28. Transfers to other funds of $7 million, capital outlay of 123, and some other adjustments that get us to the $164 million general fund budget. Showing in a pie chart, again, the $129 million, or roughly 79% of the general fund is salaries and benefits. Turning to the total budget, as was presented throughout the study sessions, each department presented their piece of the general fund or their other funds, including all the enterprise funds, which, as you know, are, you know, electric, water, sewer, refuse, and all our internal service funds, our capital improvement funds, and our debt service funds. Our total proposed citywide budget is $808 million, shown again in a pie chart. One additional thing, and we talked about this during the study session, was for the first time, we've consolidated our fee schedule in the effort to have those published on the website and ability to refer to those. Our plan is to update those throughout the year or definitely throughout the budget process, at least annually, we'll ask departments to update those. In this budget process, there were some fees identified by the library in terms of some auditorium fees. GWP has a couple of connect and disconnect fees that they want to implement or increase, and the library had some fees that they wanted to increase. We talked about the appropriation limit earlier. As Mr. Starbird said, we have a $49 million gap, and this primarily is accordance with the Constitution. But just as a point of background, the limit is in place for tax-supported revenues, so we do have a $50 million gap, which is a good thing to have. In summary, as presented tonight, the balanced, the budget is balanced. We do have a little work to do, as we discussed this morning. There are impacts, as we've talked about throughout the cuts, to the various departments. And we will obviously work on those throughout the year as we develop data on the state budget and how the economy is turning around. So with that, we are recommending that you hold the public hearing and direct staff accordingly.
All right. I am going to open the public hearing. I have two speaker cards. Is there anyone else that wants to speak on this item? Okay. Nancy Kent, followed by Mike Moehl.
Nancy Kent, resident of Glendale. I would like to respectfully request that the fees not be increased for a nonprofit group to use the library auditorium or the library community rooms for free events to which the public is invited. Thank you.
I have a quick question. What are the current fees for nonprofits? Does anyone know?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Carolyn Fleming, and I'm a library administrator. Currently, for the auditorium, the nonprofit rate is $90 for three hours, and the proposed increase is to $150 for three hours.
How often is it rented? Just sort of an average on a monthly basis? Is it 10 nights a month?
It's in frequent use, and it's in use, excuse me, during the day, during the afternoons, the evenings, the Sunday hours, when we're open, when we're closed. It's in very, very constant.
And most of the usage is by nonprofits, I would assume?
That's something I would have to find out for you. I'm not sure what the proportion of nonprofit versus profit is, and whether it's Glendale, non-Glendale residents.
What's the rate for private for profit?
Okay. There are actually four levels. The Glendale nonprofit, the nonprofit, non-Glendale, is currently 110, going to 175. The Glendale individual and commercial is three hours, 165, going to 210.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, thank you. Mike Moehl.
Thank you, Mayor. Did Mr. Starbird say we're going to have $100,000 surplus at the end of this current fiscal year?
Million.
Mr. Mayor, did he say that? $100,000? Or was it a million?
I don't know. We'll find out after your.
Because if he said that, I don't believe him. For the past two years, he keeps giving us erroneous information. I've written about that in the Glendale news press. Okay? I like to read about headline news. I've been telling this public for the last two years that I read either in the LA Times, Daily News, or on the web. Here's a, from a man by the name of Keister, Keister, who's the, from UCLA. He says, "The '90s downturn will hurt." This is June the 14th, LA Times. Talks about manufacturing. It has not come back from the '90s, and it hasn't come back even today. We're losing jobs and jobs in the manufacturing area. Okay? We've lost 400,000 jobs. We got a lot of low-paying jobs. We have a ladder. We have a lot of low-skills, low-wage jobs, and a lot of high-scale, high-wage jobs, Keiser says, but the middle is disappearing. Right here in the San Fernando Valley, LA Times, June the 12th, "A prop shop that gives the props for the movie industry, they disclosed their doors after many years in the valley." One of Hollywood's largest prop shops is closing. The latest sign that the fallout in local film and TV production has taken its toll are small businesses that serve the entertainment industry. The industry, as you know, the film entertainment industry is leaving Burbank, Glendale, because the state of California has a tax policy that's driving out businesses. City of Glendale has the same philosophy. We have high utilities. Why would anybody want to stay, why would anybody want to be in Glendale? You're building this bridge over to DreamWorks. How much manufacturing has gone in there for the last two years, I'd like to know? Gas prices going up. Six Flags, Magic Mountain filed for bankruptcy. White House plans to rein in executive pay. U.S. credit default rise to record, June the 15th. Gentlemen, this city and the state is in a major crisis. I've been telling you this for the past two years. Of course, I don't have a degree in finance. I didn't go to Harvard or Yale. As I said, Mr. Quintero, I was only a salesman for 27 years, and I called upon manufacturers. And for the last 10 years of my business, it went to the toilet. And if manufacturing is not doing well, neither will the rest of the region. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. I'll close the public hearing. Do you have any comments, questions, Mr. Weaver and Mr. Drayman?
Well, I'd like to, I'll be saying it again, and we all will later, I'd like to compliment the city staff, what they've taken us through. Out of more than 207,000 people in this city, only two came down to speak about the budget. It tells me that 99 in 910, even greater than that, people in this city realize what we're going through, steps that we have taken to get to where we're at, work that staff has done, and they've accepted it. I get no emails objecting. I see very few letters on the commentary page that are negative about what we're doing. So it's, to me, it's a big compliment owed to all of you on the city staff for what you've done. And this is only the beginning, we know.
Mr. Drayman.
Oh, it's just a minor point, Mr. Mayor. I just, I would like to extend to my colleague, Councilmember Friedman, perhaps we could make you an honorary gentleman since the speaker didn't seem to notice.
It's a hard thing to remember.
I know. That's why the correct term is council member. Members. Ms. Friedman?
I would like us to look at the point Ms. Kent made about the nonprofits having a free event. And I think it's those two equations together, or those two criteria together sort of maybe put things into a slightly different realm. And the nonprofits are going to be very hard-hit in this economy. As hard-hit as the city is, they're going to be doubly hit, because not only are their sources of funding drying up, but more people are wanting their services. So Glendale-based nonprofits or nonprofits that are serving Glendale residents, offering free events, I think that's something we should take a look at. And, you know, and if the justification is that it's using utilities at night that otherwise would be off, maybe we can have that kind of criteria where if there's hard costs that the libraries are incurring, we can cover that. But if they're during the day when there's, when otherwise the building is open, so they're not using additional resources, I think that's fair.
Mr. Najarian?
I don't want to respond to every point that Mr. Moehl made, but one of them I do need to take issue with, that's regarding the bridge over to the GC3 campus. And I think that is perhaps the best location in this city for potential and actual job growth, both at the Disney campus as well as the DreamWorks campus. These are relatively high-paying jobs, relatively well-educated workforce. The jobs themselves are, I think, better than manufacturing jobs, in a sense, they are manufacturing, but the product is entertainment and cinema. And there's no, well, I was going to say there's no pollution, but there's a little issue in Burbank that was just uncovered. But hopefully, none of that is going on in Glendale, and I'm sure we're keeping a close eye on them. But I think that is a worthwhile area, that the city itself, in its long-term vision, has dedicated many resources, with the redevelopment agency as well, to both upgrade the entire San Fernando corridor, to make it easy to get in and out of that campus. And we've dedicated, we've created a special assessment district, or was it the landscape? Landscape district. So I think, you know, you could point to other areas, but that perhaps is the anchor tenant, if you will, of our entire San Fernando Road, which has given rise to a rezoning of that entire San Fernando corridor, which would encourage other jobs to come in, live-work combinations as well. So that's the only thing that I want to mention, that that is a, I think, a bright spot, looking forward in the next two years, because even in the tough times, entertainment historically has continued to do well. And I hope that both, both those companies, there are others there, but the two main ones continue to do well with their hits, such as UP, and I know there's another movie DreamWorks is working on Madagascar 3 or something like that, so.
So you agree with Mr. Moehl on his other points, then?
No, I said that's the only one I'm going to take issue with.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Najarian. Well, I also want to compliment Mr. Elliott and his staff and the city manager's office and all the different departments that contributed to putting the budget together and worked hard to make their cuts. But unfortunately, as Mr. Starbird mentioned, we're, number one, we're not there yet. And then, number two, whatever budget we put together is going to be, I'm sure, changed and affected by whatever the state decides to do. So come the 1st of July, we will have an operating balanced budget, but I'm sure within a matter of months, we'll be back at it. But anyway.
It'll be unbalanced within a month.
Yeah, it'll be unbalanced soon. We've all done a tremendous job of putting this together and presenting the right information to us. Ms. Friedman?
I just wanted to echo something that Mayor just said. Those of you who watched the budget session earlier heard this from Mr. Weaver, but it bears repeating for the nighttime audience that maybe hasn't watched all of the study sessions and doesn't read the paper a lot. But the state is in real trouble, and they're sort of going down in flames, and they seem very intent on dragging everybody else with them. So even if our city has been prudent, which I think it has, and has done its work to balance its budget, we're at the mercy of a state that is determined to find every loophole that they can to reach that they can to reach into the pockets of your city and take your tax dollars for their problems. So if you're so inclined, if you're one of those people that likes to write emails and likes to write letters to elected representatives, this is the time to do it. This is the time to take that pencil and that pen out and find every elected representative that you have that's not sitting on this dais and let them know that you are not, you don't want to see the state, who can't get their house in order, try to solve their problems by reaching into the pocketbooks of your city and taking away the money that we have for our roads and our parks and every other thing that we spend our money on. And that's what they're doing. And it's really a crisis, and we might be back at this table again, looking for another $7 or $8 million, and that's going to really, really hurt, even more than it's, this budget's going to hurt, so.
Did you say might be back?
They will be back, and they are looking right now. They have, I'm sure, a very large team of very high-priced lawyers who are going through every single way that they can legally or illegally take money from the cities, and they're doing it. And it's a real problem.
Under threat of lawsuit.
Mr. Quintero? Okay, Mr. Najarian?
And I do want to say that this has been a lengthy process. During the campaign several months ago, it seems like it was years ago, but I think each of us who were running, as well as the two, my two colleagues who were not running, made it clear to the public that we are going to handle these difficulties, whatever they may be. And three, four months ago, we didn't foresee the extent of the difficulties at the state level. But what we all expressed then, and what we're expressing to you now, is that we, along with staff, are going to tackle any problem that comes at us. We're going to sit down as a collective body and discuss and perhaps take issue with each other's comments, but in the end, our goal is to make sure that we have a balanced budget and that the effects, the detrimental effects to our city and to our residents are going to be as minimal as possible. It's not a pretty situation. As Mr. Mohill, you know, pointed out, there are numerous articles, there are numerous cities throughout the state, throughout the nation, that are having these problems. But we're all sitting down here, ready to meet them head-on and deal with them in the best way possible. Part of the mark of a good, of a good coach and a good team is to make adjustments throughout the process. Pete Carroll, our football coach, is best, perhaps a great example. When things are not going right according to their game plan, and clearly, this is not the game plan we had three, four months ago, we sit down and make the adjustments to make sure we can get through this. And I'm confident that whatever comes our way in terms of revenues and decreased funds and additional pilferage by the state of California, that we're all going to sit down in front of you in open session and deal with the problems the best way we know how.
Mr. Weaver?
Just one other thing. We're in much better financial safe than state than most cities in the state of California. I read, I think it was yesterday or day before, for instance, Oakland, California, is looking to cut 25% of their police force in a city that has a high crime rate. 25%! I mean, look where we're at. Not near as bad. We're much better off in the city of California, much better off in the city of Los Angeles, and many other cities. And there's going to be a number of cities that may go bankrupt. We're not going to go bankrupt. And we're still going to provide essential services.
Mr. Weaver, that's what I mentioned a few weeks ago in talking to elected officials from different cities throughout the state, what struck me was not, and I'm not too surprised when you find cities that have basically low-income residents and lots of issues, including here in L.A. County, but it was talking to these cities that are obviously upper-middle-class community, especially those around the Bay Area, Silicon Valley, in just unbelievable shape, closing libraries and laying firefighters and police off. So, yeah, I agree with you. It's, I guess, we're in better shape than most of the cities in California. Any other comments? Okay, thank you very much. This doesn't require any.
No actions.
Action. Next, Mr. Kazakh.
Next, we return to oral communication discussions. Limited time is not part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Members of the council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision, and the city manager may refer the matter to their appropriate department for an investigation and a report.
Okay. Monica Son, followed by Nancy Cant.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Monica Son, and me and my family, we live on East Chevy Chase since we moved to California la, end of last year from Boulder, Colorado. And both my kids go to Glendale, Glen Oak Elementary School down the hill, down Chevy Chase, and we carpool, we carpool with our neighbor every morning, drive kids to elementary school. And almost every day, as soon as I hit on the streets, Chevy Chase, people are honking behind me, tailgating us. Sometimes get so bad that terrifying my daughter, which is just seven, just turned to seven. She's crying, I say, "Mommy, can you drive faster?" Shaking. They will kill us, they bump into our car. And I ask my kids to show them the signs is 20, 15, 25, and I'm driving slightly over that. Because that make me also nervous. I want to get a little bit faster, so they won't really hit me or kill me. This get really so bad, I can't sit at home anymore. So I told my husband, I will take today evening time to come here to talk. And I don't want to just give this problem here, and I know you are aware of this, in the last 20 years or more than that, which I heard from the neighbors, they almost give up. I don't want to give up, and we talk in the family with our kids, how to get the streets safer, and because they cannot play outside, absolutely not, because the accident is every other day, I can see the accidents. Some cars got totally broken, even getting to somebody's yards. I don't know how they can drive from the streets into somebody's yard. That happens almost every day. So I want to give some suggestions here to help solve this terrible problem, to how to catch these dangerous drivers on the roads, which they don't have any respect to people's life, don't have any respect to laws. My suggestion is that we can do neighborhood watch, because I know cities' financial situation, I don't want to spend any money on the streets to make it safer. I just suggest a neighborhood watch. We can take times, I'm sure a lot of people would volunteer on the streets, come out of house, use cellphone, use whatever, we can take pictures, these bad driver's license plates, and kids can help on that. And that's also a good education on young kids, because then from young, they would learn what is a good drive habit. And we can have these people's bad driver's license plate right down and hand it over to the police, and they could educate these kind of people to help them understand the law, understand to respect people's life and kids' life. Made me really upset was there were some moms follow me behind, and they had kids also. I really want to read their minds. What can make them thinking that they just terrifying our kids? So this is number one. So continue, my idea was have the police first educate them that they should abide the law, they should respect people's life, and if they can still don't understand, not smarter than my daughter, first grader, then they should remove from the streets driving, because they're too dangerous for everybody's life. I'm sure they would not drive just on Chevy Chase that way aggressively, rude and arrogant. Just today, when I came down, they were still honking behind me. So they are really very rude and arrogant people. They're driving either Mercedes or BMW, very bad cars. So this is the first thing I suggest, city could support us on this project that we do, the neighborhood watch program, because have police officers sitting there 24 hours a day, it won't make any sense. And these drivers, they would notice if police sitting there, and they would drive slower. So, so maybe you won't catch them. But we, all the time living there. This is the sign?
Thank you. If you'll have a seat later on, we respond. Thank you, Ms. Son. Nancy Cant, followed by Margaret Hammond.
Nancy Cant, resident of Glendale. I went to the Glendale Water and Power meeting about the water shortage that was held about a month ago, and they passed out a chart of the proposed restrictions. And I noticed that at one of, one of the later phases, it's going to, it's proposed that it will be illegal to wash a car at home. You will have to go to a car wash because car washes recycle the water. Now, I think it's reasonable to not allow people to hose down driveways or sidewalks, and I think it's reasonable to not allow people to hose off their cars, but it seems too extreme to make it illegal to wash a car with rags and a bucket of water. And I can, I can live with the mandatory decreases in water usage that are proposed, but please do not outlaw washing anything with rags and water that's in a bucket. Thank you.
Thank you. Margaret Hammond, followed by Mike Mohill.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff, and members of the audience here and at home. My name is Margaret Hammond, longtime resident. I have to agree about Chevy Chase. I went to visit a friend up there, and I'll tell you, it's one street I really dread driving on, particularly at night, it's, they're like crazy. I pulled over. I actually pulled over, and I'm not the kind that's afraid of driving. I go on the freeways, and I drive 75 miles an hour in the fast lane. But I, Chevy Chase really scares me.
Have a record of that, Margaret.
It's on video.
But what I'm saying is, I'm telling you, it's really, whatever it is with those people that come up and down Chevy Chase, it's wild. And, okay, I want to tell you something. I went to Keep America Beautiful in Riverside. They had a meeting, and a lot of the cities from Glendale, from California went there, Long Beach, San Diego, there were people, Bakersfield, from all over. And I must tell you that they were quite impressed with our ordinance on smoking when Sam got up and gave his rundown on it and showed them our ordinance and our little cards and so forth. And also, I have to tell you, we had, I think it was Bakersfield, who couldn't believe that we had gotten rid of grocery carts off the street. They went like, "How did you do it? How did you do it?" And they, we had to go into a lot of discussions. So we really set the bar pretty high in a lot of things for our quality of life, for our citizens. And then, the other thing is, I, coming back to, oh, and the other thing is, they have those panels, you know, where they collect electricity on top of the, on their top of their building, the seventh floor of their city hall, they have an outdoor auditorium, I might say, and with big beams, quite impressive. And then they have these panels on top, and that supplies most of the city hall with their electricity. And I was pretty impressed with that. I thought that was great, since the top floor wouldn't be any use anyway. I don't know how, no, I guess our top floor, I don't know what's on our top floor here, but at any rate, they, of course, it's a more modern building, but I thought it was a great idea to get the use out of it, and very impressive. It was quite, they had big, like butterfly tarps or something to cover the beams, and was really quite, quite impressive to see. Thank you on that point, if anybody's interested. And I would like to know about the River Walk, a river, whatever it is, you call over there, as to when it, we hope to get it started. And I was, I hear that DreamWorks is still giving us a problem, and I thought they got a building variance on, on the building that they needed to get, and I think, I wonder why we didn't work out some kind of a mutual understanding to obtain that easement when we had the opportunity. And now, there's talk about Disney allegedly releasing certain problematic fluids into the area around the park in Burbank and coming down into Glendale. And is that going to further hold up the funds that we need to get to start proceeding with this long-anticipated project that we've been waiting on and which would be a real asset and for the quality of life of the citizens of Glendale? And then, as to the national night out, I hope that we're all going to get behind that from all areas. And I know, as I said, we are, we have formed a South Glendale partnership, and it's, ours will be at the Pacific Community Center. And we do need some backing, some sponsors. We are going to be going from scratch, since there isn't a homeowners group in that area. We're going from scratch as a group to do, put this on in that area that really needs it. I mean, that, that area doesn't have, you know, anything. They have no block captains, no, no way to really organize in there. And so we do need some sponsorships as far as music and food. Actually, what we need too is, I wish we'd had a chance to get our flyers into the school. They're finished this week, and into there Thursday. I'm hoping that I, still, I'm hoping that I'm going to get enough flyers to do Cerritos and Roosevelt and Horseman and so forth. So keep us in mind, anybody out there that would like to help us out, we sure need the help. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. And if you need an attorney to handle your, your case, your potential arrest, let me know. Mike Mohill.
Thank you, Mayor Quintero, and council members. Did I say it right? Council members? Thank you. To address Mr. Weaver's first comment about me, about everybody's here tonight to talk about the budget. Mr. Weaver, you've heard from Mr. Milano in the past, you've heard Mr. Allen in the past, you've heard from Mr. Phil Pot in the past and others. They've written to GNP many a times. Now, if we're going to count on your judgment, sir, you've helped, you've contributed to our demise right now for the, since 1999, okay, the bond, the bonded indebtedness of the city went from $0 to $350 million, and your name is signed on that. Okay? Also, you're comparing Glendale with Oakland. Please. How about comparing Glendale with San Marino or Newport Beach? Oakland is more like L.A. And I'm glad, I'm glad I don't live in Oakland either. So come on, apples and oranges? What school did you go to? Okay, now.
I went to Glen Oaks Elementary.
Ms. Friedman, your comment about the, about the state of California and the problems we're having in the state, the problem with the state of California, I've been reading the newspapers, is because of the unions control the state of California, the county and the city level. You're a contributor to that, you got their money, the unions, and you're beholden to them. It's also at the federal level. Look at United Auto Workers. We now own a car manufacturing company. Discussed that last week, I'm not going to repeat myself, but it's the union that's got us into this problem today. Ask anybody. The next question, Mr. Najarian, about DreamWorks and the bridge. I certainly hope so, that it's a success, and it'll bring more business to us. I called on that area when I was a salesman, going back almost five years ago, and I looked for dirty business, because dirty business is where the money is. Clean business, that's like a warehouse, okay, assembly work, there's no money there. And I couldn't make a living in the Glendale area, because there was no dirty business. I had to go to the City of Commerce or Gardena, okay? Glendale has no dirty business. We're a clean shop. What we should be encouraging is technology. Now, how do you get technology to Glendale? Well, perhaps you ought to give them some tax incentives. And why would anybody want to live in? And why would anybody want to live in Glendale? The American can only bring up, bring in so much excitement. But yeah, there's, you know, there's no manufacturing as far as I could see. Had you been reading conservative newspapers or conservative, listening to conservative radio, you'd know this financial crisis has been going on for the past couple of years. I've talked about it for two years, but I'm not a city manager, I don't make two hundred and fifty million dollars. I don't give you erroneous information. I've only been telling you that the budget is not balanced every time, and you laugh at me. Mr. Starbird again tonight says, we're going to have a surplus again. And he's going to, and he's going to fool you all again. Because you know what, we can't cut enough from the budget. Because, you know, the housing crisis is here. Sales taxes are down. How much revenue can we get from, from the car, you know, Glendale brand of cars? Their, their sales are down thirty percent or thirty-five percent, retail is down. People are on welfare today, the middle class is getting welfare checks. And here we are talking about, we can't cut the payroll of the city of Glendale. These employees, they work hard, but you know, they're, again, I'm going to repeat myself, Mr. Weaver. You've always been a government employee all your life, you never, you never worked for a private industry where they cut your salary. You're on, living on twelve hundred dollars a month on social security like I am today. And they're talking about pulling away, giving me less money because I'm a senior citizen. You have a fat pay, you have a pat pension from the federal government, or is it from the state? I'm not sure which one you worked for. But if you worked in private industry, like a lot of folks here, you know it is not to have a job. Thank you all for your time and consideration.
Okay, for Mrs. Song, is there any referrals we can give her?
Yeah, they talked to her.
Okay, talk to the Glendale Police Department.
I'd just like to ask one general question again.
Sure, Mr. Weaver.
Is it they coming, anybody know, when we can put video cameras out, areas alike that, so we can start catching these speeders that we know are on virtually every street in Glendale? Is the technology getting there, the courts allowing us to get there?
Technology? Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Weaver, it's mostly the legal issues that we have to face, the technologies there. It's being used in other places, and boy, the manufacturers are chomping at the bit to release these things to agencies. But it's a matter of getting the right legislation, getting the legislators to carry it.
So what do we have to do with the legislature?
Well, we're, we're actually, and all credit to Lieutenant Povellitis, he's staying on top of this thing and really knocking on doors. And every time he gets a chance to talk to Senator Lew or Assemblyman Corian, he mentions it and tries to get the legislation. It's just, there's a lot of opposition, I think.
Do we need to write letters or something?
I believe that in that report I referred to much earlier in the evening, come back, we're going to try to hit on some of those things and talk about them a little bit. But believe it or not, tremendous opposition from, from groups that you wouldn't even think. AAA and some of these other groups that are, that are pouring a lot of money to oppose these kind of, of legal aids that we would use to help us make things.
In effect, traffic calming measures is what they are.
AAA?
AAA is one, but there, there's several, you know, if you looked at the list of some of the, of the corporations and groups and associations that oppose this, it is a little bit disheartening. You know, people who you'd think would be interested in the safety and welfare of pedestrians and motorists across the country are actually acting in opposition when we want to put in these kind of more, you know, greater technology to assist us. Because as, as Mrs. Song said, we, we all know, we've had this issue on Glendale, on Chevy Chase. You know, directed enforcement is what, what, what makes the big difference. But you can't have police officers, we just don't have those resources all the time.
Question, can you do radar enforcement of stop signs while you do of lights?
Oh, you mean photo enforcement of those?
Photo enforced, sorry, yeah, photo enforced stop signs.
Not that I've heard of.
It's paid law.
Anything to do with essentially enforcement on the roadways has to be granted by the state. State courts have affirmed this, the state essentially preempts our ability to regulate, whether it's speed in certain ways or, in fact, if the state, if the state vehicle code didn't allow us, we couldn't even regulate parking. Now, we can regulate parking because the state, because state legislature says we can.
Maybe when the state works out the budget, they can get on things like this.
I was going to mention it, that I'm sure many of you have probably read, read this as well. Many cities who have implemented the red light photo enforcement, which is what is the legal method we can use, there's been, it's been restricted so much, many of them are giving up on it. It just, it just, it has become more burdensome for them to try to deal with it, it's costly. They're unable to issue, you know, fines and recover costs and those type of things, so. But we are staying on top of the available technology. And we'll keep you posted if there's anything we can do from a council perspective to support that.
I think it's time to look at traffic calming on Chevy Chase that transcends, you know, enforcement. We'd have to work with the community, but making it more difficult for people to even be able to speed. Because it's just something, I, you know, I'm lying awake at night worrying about places like Chevy Chase, because there could just be a terrible disaster there, and it's.
And Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Friedman, we have looked at a lot of things. Unfortunately, with Chevy Chase, there's a lot of things that, that aren't in our favor. The topography, the steepness of the street, the fact that it is a primary emergency response route and in a high potential fire area, so it's very important to make sure that we don't delay response. But there are some things coming out, I mean, we've done certain things. We put the, the solar powered flashing signs up in the canyon in several locations. But as things, as we identify things that could potentially help, maybe it's, maybe we look at certain signalization in that area, I don't know. But, but we'll, we'll continue to work with the police department, not just from the enforcement side, but also the education and the engineering side as well.
Mr. Najarian.
Well, actually, you have implemented some traffic calming measures. And that's the, the white lines, which are painted.
Edge lines.
Correct. Which give the impression of a narrower roadway, which in theory slows the vehicles down. In terms of speed bumps, there's volume issues, there's turn issues, there's.
Topography.
All sorts of things. I wholeheartedly agree with Nancy Kent and the issue of prohibiting washing cars. Someone who washes several cars each week, there are methods to ensure that a hundred percent of the water that you use is recycled, and the minimum amount is used with a hose nozzle at one end, a bucket on the other, pulling your vehicles onto your front lawn and washing them. I don't know if that's legal or not, not to park.
No, that's, actually, it's not the issue, the entire matter is actually coming to you next week. And that specific issue is actually called out in the staff report. That's being, that's been raised by members of the community.
We'll discuss that, and anyway, the water would drain into the grass. And speaking of drain and draining, there is good news. In the midst of all this budget discussion, there is good news, and I, I think that I should announce it to the public, and that is the drain on our city budget of close to seven hundred thousand dollars in the case of Milano versus the city is finally over. The city won the challenge to their downtown specific plan at the trial court level. It was appealed by Mr. Milano to the Court of Appeals. He lost at the Court of Appeals level, and he took it to the State Supreme Court. And the jurists, in their wisdom, decided not to even hear the case. So to date, there is just a little bit shy of seven hundred thousand dollars in attorney's fees. And that is money that could have gone towards keeping libraries open, towards keeping police officers on the streets, towards senior, senior recreation, towards signs, towards roadway improvements, towards a lot of things. But the good news is, it is over, ladies and gentlemen. And I think, I think that needs to be, to be broadcast. Our attorneys, who were outside attorneys, and for the most part, it was supervised by Gillian Van Miden, finally put this nefarious case to rest. There's a little bit of good news also, and that's although attorney's fees are not recoverable, the seven hundred thousand are not recoverable, that money is gone forever, gone from our coffers. And if you've seen us the last few budget sessions, we're mincing ten thousand here and sometimes twenty thousand there for the PAL programs and many other programs, that money is gone. But we are by law able to recover, entitled to recover the costs. And the costs are the filing fees, the copy fees, the expert witness fees. And those amount to twenty-two thousand dollars. So I encourage Mr. Milano, if he is as genuine as he says he is about saving the city money and solving some of our budget problems, that he could present, I believe, the city clerk or the city attorney may be the appropriate gentleman to accept the check for twenty-two thousand dollars. He will be obligated, he will be obligated.
Mr. Najarian, do you realize that that almost seven hundred thousand dollars almost covered the VICE program and the COPS program? He doesn't even live in Glendale.
Well, Mr. Najarian, you left out something that's very important. The original lawsuit was filed by Mr. Milano with a development company from Los Angeles. Conquest Housing, I believe, was the, so in fact, the housing development company working with Mr. Milano filed the lawsuit. Never had any business in Glendale, this particular developer didn't. But nevertheless, they joined Mr. Milano in filing the lawsuit that led to the seven hundred thousand.
And if I'm not mistaken, there was a stipulation, an agreement between Conquest Housing and the city of Glendale. Perhaps the court was involved also, that they would play no part in the furtherance of this case. So should Mr. Milano come forth with a twenty-two thousand dollar check, I think we're well within our rights to inquire as to the source of those funds.
Actually, the first portion of the costs were paid by Conquest Student Housing pursuant to that stipulation. But the costs on appeal are not to be borne by anyone other than the remaining plaintiff, and that was Mr. Milano.
But this is good news for the city, the drain of attorney's fees on Milano versus the city is finally over.
Thank you for pointing that out, Mr. Najarian. Any other comments or staff comments?
I'd like to move, we adjourn.
Is there any?
We do have new business.
Oh, we do have new business.
Mr. Mayor, I move that as posted on the council agenda dated June sixteenth, two thousand and nine, as item one C, the city manager is hereby authorized to submit to the tax collector of the County of Los Angeles a request to remove two tax defaulted properties located in the city of Glendale from the list of properties in the county's notice of sale, two thousand and nine B. Set properties are more particularly described as assessor parcel numbers five-six-zero-seven dash zero-two-four dash zero-two-four and five-six-three-zero dash zero-two-two dash zero-zero-two. Further, should set properties not be redeemed by the owner or owners thereof, the city manager is authorized to execute any and all documents necessary in preparation for securing title to the properties in the name of the city of Glendale.
Second.
We'll call.
Councilmembers Raymond, Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes.
She has an order, a new business.
Is there one more?
It's a motion that the city attorney is hereby authorized to file a lawsuit against a third party. The third party shall be identified and the nature of the litigation shall be disclosed to anyone making a request to receive said information upon the filing and service of said lawsuit.
Second. We'll call.
Councilmembers Raymond, Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes.
We adjourn.
Second.
We are adjourned.